Fire away, Mr. Chair.
All right, we're going to call this meeting to order 7:35 for the zoning board of appeals on October the 10th. Would you all rise with pleas of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, justiciable, and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, so with respect to our members not present tonight, we have excused absences from Ron and Alexandria. Next on our agenda would be the acceptance of minutes from August 8th, 2017.
I'll make a motion to accept, Mr. Chair.
I'll second the motion.
Motion is seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the minutes?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I will declare that approved, although I am abstaining because I was not at that meeting. Next on our agenda, I'd like to welcome Town Clerk Joyce Bradshaw, one of our, may I say, our favorite people, if I should go so far as to say that.
And just very briefly, to do two things, we're just going to make sure that we reaffirm the oath of office, so you can all do that together, and also to deliver and have you sign for the new changes to the open meeting law, which took place on October 6th. Very minor changes, mostly ministeria for our offices, ours that, but you, this board does a great job of having no complaints filed against them, and a wonderful job, and the town certainly thanks you all for the time that you give to us, we really appreciate it.
Oh, thank you.
You know you're at the zoning board, right?
Yes, well, we would know, because complaints would have to be officially filed with us, and I can go on record, there have been, there have been none for the whole town, which is excellent.
Well, that's great. Great, well, we'll endeavor to persevere in that regard.
Well, that's right, that's always a very good thing, so if you don't mind, raise your right hand, and aye, and you can state your name.
Aye.
Solemnly promise and affirm that I will faithfully, honestly, sincerely, and eternally perform all the duties that are incumbent upon you as a member of the zoning board of appeals, so help you God.
I do.
And also the fact that you've received your new open meeting law documents, taught us the press, they just changed on October 6th. Very minor changes, the biggest change is that the Division of Open Government wants to be sure that everything is all on the website, our website is the official posting mechanism, we also still have the book outside our office that shows the agendas for all the meetings.
So I guess that's my first question, because we would tip it 48 hours in advance for posting a meeting or a special meeting, and what we would, what we would do previously is we'd write it up, bring it over, be timestamped, posted in the display case or in the book, so is that different now?
Most people do send us the meeting agendas and the posting 48 hours ahead, we take it in our office and just print it out, timestamp it, put it in the book, so if somebody's coming into the office, we also post the meeting notice and the agendas are all on the website. So, and there are ways of signing up, if somebody wants to get all the meeting agendas sent to them automatically, that happens.
So, I mean, I guess hypothetically, the way our board operates, like, our staff is part-time, so, and let's say Town Hall closes, what, at noon on a Friday?
Right.
So if somebody was out on a Thursday, and I needed to call, or whoever the chairman is, needed to call a special meeting, we would write it up and bring it to you, because we wouldn't be able to do it on the website.
You email it directly to me, believe it or not, I can check my email at home, and can, would make sure that the meet, especially if it was a tight time constraint, make sure I come down and just post the meeting properly into, into the book itself, and also onto the website.
Okay. And that, and putting it on the website is done through your office?
Yes, we also can put it on the website, too, so that's not, that's not a problem. As I said, I can check my emails, so if something came up that you needed to do that, send me an email, and we'll respond to it on the media page.
Okay.
But that's, that's the key to that. And all the fact, too, that the website must be, can't be down for more than six hours, we'd never have the website go down at all, otherwise you would have to cancel a meeting, so.
Oh.
Right, but we monitor that, and as I said, we'd never have the website go down, so. And there will, there will be lettering on the front and the back door notifying the public how they can access our meeting notices, if they just go to the website and want to click on, so.
Want to click on it.
That's being worked on as we speak.
So that's a new, that's a new change in Spire's, the super meeting law, though?
It's new that it, because they, when they rewrote the law, there were a lot of things that they looked at, they wanted 24/7 access for you to be able to get a meeting notice, and when we first had the open meeting law, with the fire station was next door, so the door was open 24 hours a day, so the, we posted two places outside our offices required for normal business hours, but the 24/7 access was covered by the fire department.
Gotcha.
The, the fact that after, when you adopt your website as the official posting mechanism, then, that's, that's, that's what will be on the door, if somebody absolutely needed some, some help or instruction of getting, getting to the meeting notice, that's always available.
Okay.
Well, and thank you so much for your time, and I'll let you get to your regular business.
Oh, sure, thanks. Welcome to stay as long as you want.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. So we have three new petitions in a chapel letter, so I guess we'll just go in order as it is for now. The, the first petition would be a petition of David Cronin for property at 234 Dale Street, map 64 parcel 19, represented by Attorney Vaughn. Let's just give us a second, and we'll, we'll open the public hearing for you.
Notice is hereby given that the Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing at Town Hall, 120 Main Street, North Andover, Massachusetts, on October 10th, 2017, 7:30 PM, to all parties interested in the petition for David J. Cronin for property located at 234 Dale Street, map 064.0 parcel 0013, North Andover, Massachusetts, 01845, in the R1 zoning district. The applicant is requesting two variances, a variance pursuant to section 4.136.3.C point Roman at 2.3 watershed district, for construction of a second-story addition, and a variance pursuant to section 4.136.3.C point Roman at 2.7 for gross floor average, GFA allowed 50 percent, the request is 68.9 percent, a variance of 18.9 percent in the R1 zoning district. Applications supporting materials are available for review at the Office of the Zoning Department located 120 Main Street, North Andover, Massachusetts, Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday, from the hours of 8 to 4, Tuesday from the hours 8 to 5:30, and Friday from 8 to 11:30. So ends the reading, Mr. Chair.
Okay, great, so we have a public hearing open, welcome. You may proceed.
Attorney Brian Vaughn from Smolak and Vaughn for the applicant, Dave Cronin. We're before you tonight looking for a variance from the watershed protections, special permit requirements. This is a property that's, that's located, it was a lot, I guess, first of all, that was created prior to 1994. It's located in the non-discharge buffer zone, however, the entire project is located within the non-disturbance, excuse me, it's located within the non-discharge zone, but outside of the non-disturbance zone. But the entire parcel itself, so the entire project will in fact be within the non-discharge buffer zone.
Outside of the non-disturbance, within the non-discharge, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
It's, the, the existing home is a total of 1556 square feet pursuant to the provisions of the bylaw. For expansion of an existing structure, you're only allowed to expand up to 50 percent of the existing gross floor area. The expansion that we're looking to do would exceed that.
Within, within that non-disturbance zone?
Correct.
Or was, or part of a different?
So, the bylaw, as you're familiar with, is very complicated and difficult to understand at times. I believe it's incorporated into the, the, go right to the section.
I know the part you're talking about, I was just asking if it was referenced in the, as part of the, the non-disturb, non-discharge.
Right, it's, it's, it's the section C3, and it's incorporated into the non-discharge by reference.
Okay.
So, the expansion that we're, we're looking to do for this structure would be a total of 925 square feet, which is actually a pretty small expansion, the home itself is, is very small. And I think what should be noted about this particular home is the gross floor area of it includes 778 square feet of basement space, which in fact, much of, which is, is not livable space, some of it is, but I think in total, it's approximately 1,050, would you say, square feet of, of livable space? Mr. Cronin?
I'm sorry, I didn't understand, is it 700 or 1,050, seven, what did?
In terms of gross floor area?
Yeah.
It's just based on the perimeter walls, it is in fact 778 in terms of size, but in terms of what is actually livable area of the home, it does not include all of that, it's part, part of its unfinished basement with
Utilities.
Utilities and, and such.
Okay.
Is you saying the basement is not calculated in your gross floor?
It is calculated in the, in, in the total, the entire basement area is calculated, so it's based on 1556 square feet, which is total gross floor area. However, I was just pointing out that in fact, actually, gross living area of the, of the home is only 1,000 square feet. Mr. Cronin's family is expanding, he's faced with a decision of
Is it one, it's one level, right, you want to go up, you want to go to the second floor then?
Yes.
Correct.
That's what you're doing? You're not changing the footprint, right?
Yes, yes.
Not changing the footprint at all?
You're not?
In terms of, there's a proposed deck, right, an uncovered deck, but you're not adding
Portions of the deck are covered, portions of it
But the structure itself.
The structure itself is going up one floor, but it's going to be, the reason it's expanding slightly, it's going in a garrison style, so there'll be a slight overhang
Sure.
On each side, and if you look at the architectural renderings, I think that that actually, design is, it's, it's a really nice-looking design, and I think the way that, the portion of the covered porch on the side of the home, I think it's aesthetically very pleasing rendering, if you haven't had a chance to look at them, I would urge you to do so.
Are you on sewer?
Yes.
Okay.
Wish you septic? I'm, I'm sorry, you said sewer, that's right, okay, sorry.
Yeah, not yet to sewer.
How long have you had the prop, how long have you owned the, the structure?
Uh, 10 years.
10 years. So my recollection of this watershed protection district, I could be mistaken, often I am, but it may have gone, that may have been a bylaw that went in prior to the sewer.
Correct.
Right, when all these properties were on septic systems, and then there was a sewer expansion project, which
Correct.
May have negated the need, or whatever, but now we have both.
Right, the, the intent of the bylaw was obviously to protect the watershed, it's a critical resource, so that our drinking water wouldn't be infiltrated, and the way the bylaw was, was drawn was probably an indirect attempt to limit the extent or scope of expansion, and it really was probably tied to trying to limit the number of bedrooms that you would be adding to limit the size of
Protect the watershed, right?
Right.
Because when you're adding bedrooms and you're, you're increasing the size of the existing structures, you're
Exactly.
Increasing the size of the septic system at that time, so on and so forth, so it's a pretty large, you know, all-encompassing zone, if you will, the watershed protection zone, justifiably so, but you're only going up.
Right.
Right, so in, in terms of the issues that, that would be considered, I mean, I would make a couple of notes, one is that, you know, we're, we're not dealing with septic, which is the biggest concern we should be having in, in the watershed, because here we're on sewer. Secondly, the, we're going, you're exactly right, we're going up, we're not going, we're not going out. Third, I think, you know, this is a pre-existing home, it's been around for quite some time, though it's in the watershed protection district now, it was developed when it wasn't in the watershed protection district, because it didn't exist. Currently, this property is not subject to any of the restrictions which would be placed upon the property by virtue of having a watershed special permit.
Yeah.
Typically, what's going to be included are going to be restrictions on the types of, you know, fertilizers and things that can be discharged on the property to begin with, as of right now.
So you're caught, you're, because the planning board will act as the special permit granting authority
Right.
For the watershed special permit, so long as we grant, this board grants the waiver for what you want to build within that no discharge zone, right? So you're really, you're caught between two boards?
Well, we're caught between two boards, and I would say specifically, the reason, though, is in this particular case, it's because we're, we're requesting a variance from the requirement that expansion cannot exceed
Yeah.
50 percent of existing gross floor area.
Which is an interesting number in the, in the context of the bylaw, you know, I mean, I don't know how that came up.
It is, and it changes, though, I mean, because there's two provisions, it's, it's, it's 50 percent if it's less than a 2,500 square foot home, I believe, and maybe 25 percent if it's higher, you know, don't quote me on that, but they're two separate provisions based on the size of the structure, but, so there is, there is some protection, but in, in the context of this particular home, and I don't know if you've ever driven by it and seen it, I mean, I think if you look at the architectural renderings and what is being proposed to be done here, it, it really is a substantial improvement over what currently exists. I mean, I've lived out in that end of town my whole life, on Winter Street, and for, for the life of me, long before I was even ever a lawyer, I used to drive by this house and think to myself, wow, I wish someone could do something with this, this property. And lo and behold, there's obviously a lot of site constraints, and now in particular, it's subject to this watershed special permit, which really ties your hands as to what you're able to do.
Yeah.
So
So where, where are you with the planning board process? Have you, have you started a hearing with them?
No.
Will they not hear you?
We, we can't file with them unless we get a variance from, from the ZBA.
They won't let you, I mean, you could file, or they won't let you file? You could have two concurrent hearings, right?
Well, we could, but I believe we maybe tried to file, and they said that they won't accept it, and we need to, to have a variance.
They won't accept it?
They instructed me to go through the variance process before we do the special process.
So I find this interesting, so what happens if you have an application, and you take it over to Town Clerk's office, and you have it timestamped? Well, that starts the clock ticking, so you mean to tell me that they're not going to accept it? Because I find that to be hard to believe, they're required to act, so, but whatever.
Well, right, except I think in, I think in this particular case, it, because we're, we're looking for a variance from, from what is a, a specific
Yeah.
Dimensional requirement.
But you would want to know what the planning board is going to require of you as well, and not, I mean, stormwater management, if any, whatever their site plan review process is going to be.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, there's really some benefits to the applicant, in my view, which is probably in the minority, it's more than just us setting a footprint, you know, I think more is the totality of your project. For example, there is a, did you see a memo that came in today from Conservation?
We did, we just, we got it this afternoon.
I just saw it. I don't know what, if any, impact that has in terms of what you want to do or not, in terms of your delineation line, if it's even applicable, how it ties into a building permit for you.
Yeah.
You know, we, this board, you know, wouldn't necessarily look at that unless your argument is that that wetland line is, if any, is somehow driving your need for a variance.
Right, and I, I can speak to a few things that were in that, that memo, I think there was some confusion, and my office was not involved on, on the front end in this filing, and, and Dave is working with an architect, I think if you've seen his plans, you can see his architect did a fabulous job, he's working with also Christiansen and Sergi,
yeah.
Who I'm sure you're familiar with, and they've done a lot of watershed special permits in town.
Yeah.
I think where there was some confusion is sometimes we'll see where we'll have both plans combined into a, a single plan that is going to go for both zoning and planning. In this particular case, there are, there, there's multiple plans that I, that I've actually seen, I think we've included some of them, so some of the information which Jen was looking for on our variance plan, and she, I would say, is probably right, that it, it should be on the variance plan, was in fact on the special permit plan, but not on the variance plan.
Well, why, I mean, what, what do they, what do we need on the variance plan that isn't already there? I mean, I don't, we have your set, we have your structure, we have your proposed structure, your existing structure.
Yeah, I, I think
What else is there?
I, I think it's just because you're, you're looking, if you look at the separate plan, which shows where the variance line is, then you can see the 100-foot setback, so that that is what effectively is confirming the, being within the non, outside of the non-disturbance and into the
Yeah, I mean, it's informational. I mean, I, you know, it's informational, certainly the more information we have, the better.
Right.
But at the, at the same hand, I don't know if we necessarily need it unless it's driving the variance. What we tend to like, quite honestly, on the watersh, on these types of variances we've seen before, is the impact on the stormwater, which effectively drives the variance in the context of if you're disturbing a certain amount of area within that non-disturbance zone, and it goes out to peer review at the planning board level, right?
Right.
To Ms. Eckelstein, and it comes back, that's the kind of stuff that sort of drives that particular part of the variance, in my experience, but it almost seems to be negligible, in my view, to a certain extent, if you're not expanding your footprint.
Yeah.
There's disturbance, but it doesn't seem to be significant.
Right, I mean, we're, we're not really, we're not increasing the foundation area, so there's not going to be any new foundations dug or anything like that, that to me would deserve anything, the roof.
You are increasing the driveway.
We are, we do plan to increase the driveway, yes.
So you are disturbing some
Okay, so, yeah, the, the, the foundation wouldn't disturb, but, yeah, the driveway would, so.
Yeah.
So there is, there is disturbance done, Al, so it's not just a setup, I have this building.
I understand, it's just not
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, we, you know, we see these often, but the stormwater, I guess, if, if you're disturbing, if you're disturbing the driveway, you're changing things
Yep.
There's runoff, right?
Absolutely.
Where's it going? You know, I mean, that's significant in terms of IC, in terms of what you're looking to do, you know?
Right, and
But not the, not going up, unless there's additional, but, you know, and how, how are you capturing the water from the roof?
And direct, and it's going, I mean, I'm sure the planning board's going to want some type of infiltration system, and we're going to ultimately do whatever the planning board wants, should they approve.
Are you going to Conservation as well?
Yeah. So, on this, I don't know that we are going to need to go to Conservation on this one, although we're going to be in front of Conservation, because I think one other matter that was noted in this memo, which I'll, I'll address at this point, is the clippings that were put into the bath, and, and that was in existing condition prior, actually, to Dave's acquisition of the, the property, and he believed that, been in touch with Jen, was going to be in touch with Jen.
So her issue is the delineation of the, of the wetland line, if there is one, right?
Well, and, and there is one, and on the delineation, I should also note that, you know, Norse Environmental, our consultant, went out with Jen, they had a site visit, she had a proposed change to the delineation, got rid of a particular flag, which then connected two other flags, and drew the, the line a little bit closer to our property, but it didn't, it didn't impact the, our non-disturbance, it revised
So the issue is, does she agree with your wetland line?
Right, and she has confirmed that, at this point.
Well, it doesn't, I mean, so, maybe to you, so I guess as far
No.
But the memo to us dated
Today.
Today.
Yeah.
Says she hasn't, so I guess that's
Well, I, I think what she was saying is that it's not shown on the variance plan, and that's what I was, you know, if you look at the actual variance plan as opposed to the watershed special permit
Oh, it doesn't show the, okay.
There is no, the variance plan does not show the wetlands line.
It's not required to.
Well, I, I think she cited to
Prestigious.
The variance application on, if you look at the fourth page of the variance application, section 10C
Yeah.
Two and four, the plan requirements, says that it should show
Is it in our rules and regs, because that's what controls, right?
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't know
I don't, I don't really see it.
In the rules and regs, and there is
You're saying it's in the variance application plan?
Right.
Like, the same, the same application we've been using since time in Memorial?
Yeah. Yeah, but, but I think she was, her citation at least was to that section 10C, two and four.
What section?
On, you on page four of the variance application?
Page four.
Features, required features on plan, site orientation, and with two zoning districts, I think on the variance plan, I don't think it, it made mention specifically to the watershed special permit district, and then for wetlands, if applicable, in this case, they would be applicable because of
What section are you?
It's over here.
I, I think Attorney Mancie also pointed out the assessors' references, we're actually in the town, not the Andover, not Hilton, so
Yeah, I, I saw that, but again, I wasn't involved on the front end, and
Just an FYI.
Well, assuming, assuming we're revising the plan to include the wetlands line.
I would say the wetlands would be applicable if they're driving the variance.
Right.
I mean, I would say, that's how I would read it, because it says if applicable.
Mm-hmm.
I'm going to go back and check our applications, previous years, if they all say the same thing, but in any event, that's up to you, I guess, if you feel as though it's, it's driving whatever, or the board feels as though they need it.
How many bedrooms are in it now? Existing?
It's two bedrooms.
And how many are you going to?
It's going to be, we're going to try to do three bedrooms and convert bedroom in the basement, so four bedrooms.
Could you perhaps explain some of the construction related to the retaining walls? Most would look to me about the 40, 40-foot long retaining walls, close to the 100-foot mill build line.
So, we plan on building the two retaining walls so we can level out the property, because it's on a continuous slope down, we just plan to use standard, like, stack block, back still behind it and a drain underneath it.
Yes.
He's just looking at
Be normally going down the
This is the only site plan?
Site plan number one, and also site plan number two.
I just want to make sure these are the same.
Okay, so the wetland line isn't here, that's what she's talking about.
Well, there's two of them, I have one here, 9/4, and I have one dated 7/21.
Mm-hmm.
Is there a reason why there's two of them in here?
When you say two
Never revised plan?
Was it revised, date revised 9/4? So we should be looking at the 9/4 plan, right?
Uh, I believe so.
When, which plan?
I'm looking at the watershed
Water shed permit.
Special, the special permit plan.
That was the plan you were
So, wouldn't you need us to endorse that plan as well, the watershed special permit plan, in the context?
Thank you.
It doesn't, the
Are you being asked to?
Wouldn't you need us to in terms of a variance?
Um, no, I, I don't think we would need that in terms of the variance, but we would need the planning board to endorse it.
Well, how do we set, how do we set the footprint on that plan if we don't endorse it?
Well, that, that was, if, do you have the, the variance plan that was submitted?
I'm looking at two. So we have two plans, so that must be what Conservation's referring to.
Exactly.
This one doesn't have the This one doesn't have the, because it's going, because it's going to planning.
The foundation, as, as said, on this special permit plan is the same as would be approved on the variance plan, but I, I think that it was the variance plan which didn't reflect the wetlands line which was delineated on the watershed special permit plan.
Yeah, I mean, I would think you would want us to endorse them both, to be honest with you, but I guess that's your call. So, this special permit plan looks like you're outside of the hundred-foot buffer. It doesn't show the, the wetland delineation line, right?
Yeah, I, if I can, I think. Yeah, so this, this plan, when it was revised, this is the latest, and if you look back over here at the wetland line, this was the, the prior one, and this was where I was watching the flag eight-one, eight-two, eight-three. And when they went out, reviewed it, they got rid of this flag, they ran the line across here, and then the hundred-foot buffer line was changed here. So, this is in fact the, the correct one.
We actually have both of them.
No, I know, I have it, it's just I can't, you know, I mean, I can't really accept that, you know what I mean?
Yeah, oh, I, I understand, but.
Someone's, it's going to be a little bit more official, but I understand for reference purposes, which you mean.
That's what, that's what.
Yeah. So you're out of that, so. So you don't know whether they're going to make you do a peer review on any kind of stormwater?
No, I, I, I don't know what, what they will make us do. I do know that we'll have to do whatever they make us do.
Can I ask a question about the intent of the bylaw as it relates to this? I guess, curious if, obviously, intent, the intent of the bylaw is if you're proposing to build in excess of this fifty percent of the square footage of the existing dwelling, then there's a review process that takes place because it's in the location that it is. But, I, I just, I'm just, maybe it's semantics or my practicality just going berserk, but what would prevent someone from just building fifty percent and then coming back two years later, or, again, pick a number? There's nothing in the bylaw, am I correct in saying that there's nothing in the bylaw that says the applicant couldn't come back in a month? Or, pick a, pick a time and file another permit?
I think that the control, the controlling measure is that every time you were to do something, you would need a new watershed special permit. And, so you subject yourself to the process, again, I mean, and you may, if you're under the fifty percent requirement in this particular zone, we may not have to go to the zoning board. The reason we have to come to the zoning board is because we need a variance from the fifty percent requirement.
Right.
But, we would, you know, if we wanted to add, if this were approved, and then we wanted to add two hundred square feet.
Yeah.
We would need to go back, submit a new special permit application.
To conservation.
To, well, to planning. And plan, we would go through the entire review process, and, you know, there is some discretion that they have, and they very well could say, well, no, we, you know, we're looking at this in, in the context, and in fact, that does, and I know that because we do have a client who, you know, had a special permit approved for a very small expansion, but it was looked at in the context of the entirety of, of the original special permit as well. Thank you.
I, I don't know where the fifty percent number comes from, in terms of, you know, where, where they got fifty percent.
Yeah, at some point, they have to trigger some review process.
I mean, I do think it predates the SOWA.
Yeah, it absolutely does predate SOWA, and it's very intent, primarily was for purposes of really having some type of a control over what you're doing with septic systems, and that was the original intent. But, again, I guess, kind of getting back to, like, this particular case and this particular property, you know, there are, all development isn't bad development, and even though we may be expanding some impervious surfaces on the site, by virtue of going through this process, we are also addressing issues, hopefully improving the existing conditions to better protect the watershed in the first place, you know, sometimes what we're concerned about is what's being put into our lawns, which is going to infiltrate into the ground, get into the groundwater, get into the lake. Right now, there's no restrictions on, on this parcel, by virtue of putting a special permit in space, in place, we, we will, in fact, subject it to a declaration of restriction and certain controls that don't currently exist.
Does it have any questions?
I don't think I have any questions, Mr. Chair, no.
Is there anybody, I'm just, is there anybody, any of butters, statutory butters that want to be heard as it relates to this project? Three hundred feet, you would have, in any direction, you would have got a notice. Mr. Morgan?
Good evening.
How are you, sir?
My name's Ed Morgan, I am the neighbor of Mr. Cronin. I have lived in the neighborhood for sixty-nine years. I lived at home on Dale Street for the past thirty-something years, and David has been a neighbor for ten. I've watched him for the past several months talk about his family, his wife was here, they have two children, one on the way, and what they're trying to do is take their home, their existing home, without going out, and just go up. And my wife is a real estate agent, I'm a fire chief, and we are one hundred percent in favor of this project, and we'd love to see this go through for he and his family, and, in my opinion, it'll do nothing but improve the neighborhood. He's been a good neighbor for the past eight or nine years to me, never caused any problem, and I, I believe that would continue. So I'm just, I'm all in support of that for him, and I'm sure, David, he's, he's trying to abide by any rule, regulation. He's a conscientious guy, he owns his own business, and I just feel that he's, he's going to go right by the book, just, just as if I would, if I was trying to do something in front of you folks, nobody's trying to cut any corners, so whatever's required, I'm sure he'll try to abide by.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Anyone else?
No.
All right, well, what would you like us to do with this tonight? Are you, are you looking for us to act on this tonight, or do you want to, we get a new plan, but what would you like us to do?
Just, just for the record, I'm not comfortable signing a bylaw that's not accurate. Just to.
Yeah.
This, the second detail on the bylaw, aside from, I think you're referring to Town of Middleton? Is that what you're referring to?
The delineation, you know, the, the correct delineation, some type of stormwater, it's written in notes, but I can't see. Yeah, to just show the correct delineation.
It's my expectation that the variance plan is going to be amended to at least reflect Town of North Andover, because additionally, the reference to the deed, the page appears to be inaccurate, the deed that was submitted with the application, the page is two-oh-two, and what's noted on the plan is page four-twenty, so just in the, as things get cleaned up.
Do you guys want to use that one plan, or do you want them to submit a more all-encompassing plan, where we're signing off on one side of a bylaw that if they were to be approved, and then that same plan is then going to, going to planning? Instead of having two competing plans.
So, for, for me, I wouldn't mind signing a clean reference on this lot and having the reference of a, of a correct delineation plan, because that is more of a planning board plan, as, as close as this is being a zoning, a variance is requested on this and chose clearly. So, the delineation on, it's, it's important for the application.
Yeah, but there's just, there's two plans, because there's two variances, well, there's two variances. There's the plan that represents the watershed protection district, which is the site plan that's going to planning. And then there is the fifty percent plan for the structure, and I, I think you should.
I would suggest, and I understand that this comes back to.
Maybe have two.
Kind of the age-old thing of having two boards, where I would personally prefer to have a separate plan, correct the variance plan, so that it's, it meets all of your, your requirements, has all necessary information. But then, I think it just allows more flexibility in dealing with, with the planning board on, the planning board, and, and in particular, I guess.
Well, that's where I get a little, that's where I get a little uncomfortable. The plan that we're, I don't mind the first plan as it relates to the, to the fifty percent, because, you know, obviously, it's going to get cleaned up. But if we're setting a footprint for the protection district, we should be endorsing that plan that's then going to.
That's what I was going to say, is that whatever we did on their plan, we would not be able to move, we would not be able to go, alter the footprint that, that you approve.
But this one, this plan doesn't show the protection district, it's the second plan that does.
Well, right, and that's why I want to add that information to the first plan.
We should do two plans.
I mean, it also doesn't show the driveway or the retaining walls, or the, I mean.
Yeah.
So, I mean, for, for me, like, the disturbance, if you're just talking about disturbance, and that seems to be relevant to what we're talking about, the nineteen pier footings for the deck, it's like, okay, we're not extending the living space of the house, but you're, you're putting in a foundation of a house, almost, and then you're building retaining walls, so you're disturbing, like, the majority of the site. So, I mean, I guess that should just be reflected on this plan.
I, I would say disturbing in the context of, of this is really.
I don't see how we can grant the variance for the watershed without endorsing the plan for that particular variance. And I'm okay with, with what you're submitting and sending the endorsement over to them, or having you amend it, so it can be sent to them. You know, but they need to know, you know, what we approved. That's, that's just the way, you know what I mean, and then, I think it kind of locks them in a little bit, in terms of being able to change a plan, because once we've granted the variance, if we do grant it, then anything else that would be needed would be a minor precaution. It wouldn't be reopening a, a new public hearing. If anything were needed.
Yeah, I, I, I just, if you can just envision, I guess, what concern people have on a, a, a plan which is approved on this side, but then is subject to.
Well, here's the problem, I don't, we don't even have the stormwater counts, and that would tend to drive this type of relief, right? But, I'm comfortable, like, personally, you know, not personally, my one view is, I'm comfortable endorsing two plans, knowing that those calculations are coming and will be filed with us pursuant to your planning board application, so long as that's the plan we're endorsing. That's just one person, I don't know where anybody else falls on that. But I want to, I want to send, I want to make sure what's going over there is what we approved. You know?
Okay.
Because it's, it's clearly driven by the site work, not the construction. But, you know, I mean, I, I mean, I would be, I would be in favor of moving it tonight, subject to the, the correct plans being submitted within the time, you know, one person being submitted timely for endorsement. But if, I don't know where everybody else is on that.
I, I just think there's too many errors on the plan. On this, this is just not, so if there's errors, like, you don't know the deed number, or you don't, the town. It makes you a little hesitant to sign something.
Well, the wetland line.
Well, the wetland line, the delineation line, I myself would prefer not to close it, and if you.
Okay, so then you're talking, so, no, I mean, it's up to the board, the board's going to, so if the board's inclined to continue that, continue then to the next meeting, and you get all that stuff in, perhaps that's enough to get a planning board application started.
As it should be. There's many people who do multiple meetings, I don't know why they wouldn't let you, I'm just curious on that.
Because they meet every two weeks, and every, you know, you're, you're losing time.
Just to be clear, we don't necessarily, if we vote on this this evening, um, can, in terms of signing documents physically, we, we would not necessarily have to sign the document, if it's being incorrect, we would be, that would be pending submission within a timeframe, and then we sign it in the office, right?
All I was thinking of, decisions get issued within fourteen days, so if the conditions, if the board were to move it in the affirmative, and it was conditioned upon the correct documents being filed timely, that would be, but Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair is not comfortable with that, so, that sounds like the board's best option is to say, look, we'll continue till the next regular meeting date, get everything into us timely, and then, so long as there's no other major issues, you know, it would be nice to have something in the file list, the stormwater. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
I, I would prefer to continue as well, Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
I think given what we've, we've heard, we would like to request a continuation.
All right. With that request, is there a motion to continue?
Just, just before you do that, to be clear, we wanted a new bylaw.
Two.
The other bylaw to show the correct plant delineation and some stormwater counts, is that what you want as well, or if?
Well, you may not have them in time, but if you have them, file them.
If available. That's not going to drive me to decide either way, to be honest with you. I don't know about anyone else, is there anything else that they need, that anyone would request?
Not from the, not Madam Chair.
I think it's driven by water, you know, in terms of this, this particular zone, the fifty, the fifty percent is one issue, but, you know, the other variance is driven by where the, where's the water going.
So, on the bylaw, you guys would like to, obviously, we have to correct the Middleton thing and the.
Deed reference.
And the deed reference, and show the water line, the, the wetlands delineation.
Sounds like the conservation department would like you to pick up the hun, the, the wetlands delineation to show that you're outside of the one-hundred-foot buffer zone, which is, which is the requirement to file within the conservation department. So it's probably a good, a good idea to pick that up, since that would be a separate plan that we would endorse to go to planning board. And then when you get to the planning board review process, they might look at the application a little bit differently than the way that we do, because they'll be looking at the stormwater in the site, which we would ultimately like to have a copy of in our file, if they require it.
I offer no opinion as to the substance of this, Mr. Chair, but the notice that I read aloud indicates map sixty-four, parcel thirteen, but it appears everywhere else that it's parcel twenty-eight, is that something that needs to be re-noticed or noted in some way?
Well, that's interesting. Well, that's interesting.
What is your address, still your address?
Two thirty-four.
Well, why don't you just confirm for the next meeting the map and the parcel numbers?
It's, it's, thirteen comes from the variance application, Mr. Chair.
I think it may be de minimis, I mean, in terms of the abutis list that was circulated, but we'll have to double check that and make sure it's properly noticed as it relates to all of... That would, the address is the address, but the map on parcel would drive the abutis notice. So, so long as the correct people are notified, I wouldn't be as concerned as if we noticed a different lot, which I think might have a different issue.
In reviewing the town of North Andover abutis list submitted, Mr. Chair, their, the point of origin appears to be parcel twenty-eight, the correct parcel.
Parcel twenty-eight, okay. So if the correct parcel was noticed, then we can just, I think we could just make a correction. So just confirm that for us.
I will.
Got your hearing open though.
November fourteenth. Nothing else, I'll make a motion to continue to November fourteenth, Mr. Chair.
Motion is just...
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. You have continued to the fourteenth and Merrill will have a form if you're so inclined to say it. This one will be settled, will you do it?
Yep.
Just let, let our office know if you're unable to get onto the planning board docket. I just, I'd just like to know. Have a nice night.
Good night.
Good night.
Thanks. Mr. Vaughn, are you on deck for the next hearing as well? So the next one is a petition of Michael Thomas and Cornelius Donovan.
Yes.
Okay, they're properly loaded at four seventy, five hundred and five thirty, Boxford Street, map one oh five C, parcels forty-one, forty-two and forty-three in the R one zoning district.
Notice is hereby given that the Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing at Town Hall located at one twenty Main Street, North Andover, Massachusetts on Tuesday, October tenth, two thousand seventeen, seven thirty PM. All parties interested in the petition of Michael Thomas and Cornelius Donovan for property four seventy, five hundred, five thirty, Boxford Street, map one oh five point C, parcels oh four one, oh four two and oh four three, North Andover, Massachusetts, oh one eight four five, in the R one zoning district. The petitioner is requesting dimensional variances for four seventy, five hundred, five thirty, Boxford Street to allow for a lot line adjustment between properties depicted as assessors, map one oh five point C, parcel forty-one, with adjacent property depicted as assessors, map one oh five point C, parcel forty-two, with adjacent property depicted as assessors, map one oh five point C, parcel oh four three. A variance is requested for lot area pursuant to seven point, section seven point one in table two of the zoning by law, dimensional requirements for lot area. A variance is also requested for minimum contiguous buildable, buildable area pursuant to section seven point one point one of the zoning by law in the R one zoning district. Application and supporting materials are available for review at the Office of Zoning Department located at one twenty Main Street, North Andover, Massachusetts, Monday, Wednesday and Thursday from the hours of eight to four, Tuesday from the hours of eight to five thirty and Friday from eight to eleven thirty by order of the Board of Appeals, Appellate Man City Third Esquire Chairman.
Okay, welcome.
This matter involves three separate parcels as currently situated on Boxford Street. They're in, the owners are three brothers. Sitting next to me is Michael Donovan, he's one of the lot owners, and his two brothers own the other two adjacent lots. These lots were laid out back in the seventies and are, you know, were laid out prior, I guess, to the contiguous buildable area requirements coming into play. I think, you know, if you're familiar with this area, there's a substantial amount of wetlands out, out here. And I think from when this property was originally laid out until, till now, it's, it's changed substantially. Yes, it, it always has been wet, but no, it has not always been as wet as it currently is. And I think the, when wetlands were relatively a new thing, filling of wetlands was not uncommon. It was actually allowed. And I think the development of the Duncan Drive area really significantly impacted this, this, this property. But in any event, the, the current situation is that we have three lots, none of which are complying with our, our zoning, present zoning requirements. The bigger building constraint is the wetlands and finding a place to build. Fortunately, because these three lots, I guess, are owned by brothers who can get along and work together and try to, to do something to salvage the land, they're able to come to an agreement between them of, well, maybe if we can kind of combine the, the three lots in, into two, we can get two hopefully buildable, buildable lots and it's not a total loss or effective, I guess, taking by virtue of, of changes in wetlands and changes in, in The good thing that's happening with this proposal is that we're taking three non-conforming lots and making them comply in all ways, with the exception of the contiguous buildable area. We're looking for a contiguous buildable area variance for each of the lots. The...
Can I just ask you? I have four lots, so is, what lot are we not talking about? I have A, B, C and D.
Right, A is not, not included. It's B, C and D on that particular plan.
Maybe it's my sister's and she's still on that.
So we're, we're proposing to combine lots B, C and D and C currently has an existing structure on it. We're proposing to raise the structure on C, combine B, C and D into two lots, make the two new lots comply with all current zoning requirements except for the, the CBA. And we're seeking a variance on each of the two new lots for the, the CBA. Probably worth, I guess, addressing again, the memo that was received today from Jennifer Hughes, Conservation Administrator.
Is there another memo for this? Oh, yeah.
Yeah, which we received this afternoon at about four fifteen, so... But a couple of points that I guess I would...
What does this mean? What is the order of resource area delineation and how does that follow?
So the order of resource area delineation, we actually submitted the actual order with our, with our filing and the ORAD or Order of Resource Area Delineation is the Conservation Commission's, I guess, in simplistic terms, the confirmation of what is the wetland boundary. The, we originally were going to submit this application probably end of last year, earlier this year, and it was brought to our attention at that time that our wetlands line had not been confirmed by Conservation Commission and that's kind of a first order of business because if we were to seek a variance for CBA and then find out that Conservation disagreed with what our consultants had established as a wetland line, it could change the calculations for CBA. So we put the brakes on when it, the right time of year, I guess, we got our, our consultant out there, they reviewed the wetlands with Conservation. Conservation, in fact, confirmed our wetland line.
So why is Conservation... So you have a wetland plan that was part of that order.
Correct.
They showed two lots or one lot? These are your two proposed lots as part of this? Is that, is that what this is in terms of...
On that particular...
Came with the memo? Is that what this is?
That's the, that's the plan that the...
Yes.
Yes. That, those are the plans we're proposing, but that particular plan that came with the memo was...
They're proposed.
Well, it, on the one hand, it's proposed, on, on the other hand, the significance of that was that was the, the wetland flagging plan that the Conservation Commission reviewed and confirmed that the flags...
Did they accept your flags?
Yes.
Okay.
So...
So here's my, here's my question. It looks like you got plenty of street frontage, right?
Mm-hmm.
So you, at any point, you can file an A and R plan and create two lots, whether they're buildable or not, doesn't, you know, isn't within the purview of A and R, you can just do it and then you go for your building permit and they tell you what you're missing. So you guys are ahead of this curve and you're saying, look, we know we can make the two lots, we're just missing the, the contiguous buildable area.
Correct.
Because you got plenty of, you got plenty of frontage. So whatever the wetland line is or isn't, how, how is it driving the request for the variance with us? Because that's a conservation issue.
I, I don't disagree and I, I, I think, I think it absolutely is a conservation issue. I think that Conservation has legitimate concerns, there's wetlands here and there's no question. My client knows, Bill McLeod's our, our consultant, he's not here tonight, and he's aware...
Make the lots tomorrow, they may not give you, they may not approve it, right?
If, right, if we, if we don't have, if we don't have workable lots to, to, to start from, you know, we really, we can't submit anything for...
But you got three grandfather lots in, in the context of...
In the, in the context...
Give three lots.
Correct, except we also know that they have significant wetland site constraints so that, you know, realistically, you know, being able to cite septic plans because we're not connected to sewer here for, for three lots, we're not going to be able to run sewer out there, obviously, it's not feasible. So we need to have, have septic. So, you know, we need to come up with, with a plan which contemplates having enough space for building as well as enough space for septic systems. The, submitted with our application were the septic designs. Those, you know, I, I think this memo referenced that the plan submitted did not have the correct delineation. My understanding from, from Bill McLeod is that in fact, there was no changing in, in the wetlands line, the delineation, and that those septic plans contemplated the same wetlands line as was confirmed by the ORAD.
That's a Board of Health issue.
Board of Health issue.
They're going to tell you whether or not, they're going to give it to you or not.
Right. You guys can say, gee, we approve of this variance, but, you know, we go to Board of Health and they could say, no, you can't, no. In fact, I think Bill McLeod has already gone to Board of Health on this because this, the constraints on the site are significant enough that before he was able to draw, well, where do I think the line should be, he really had to kind of start from...
You must think you can build something or you wouldn't have filed...
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
So you must, there must be some...
And, and whatever it is that, that is built...
We don't have, we don't have your proposed sighting though, in terms of what it is you're actually looking to construct, right?
Oh, no, you, you do.
But it's on separate, it's not together or one thing.
Oh, wait a second, I stand corrected. I apologize, yeah. I'm sorry, I saw your...
Oh.
Okay, so your nineteen seventy plan.
The fastest.
You taxed on three lots or four...
But an individual one.
You taxed on it, right?
Yeah. Yeah, they, they are taxed, there's three and three buildable lots, as I understand.
Seventy-six, seventy-seven was the original...
Okay, so septic plans, lot one and two, okay. So you showed septic plans. But have they been approved, the septic plan?
Yes, with variance from, not, not a zoning variance.
Board of Health grant...
Board of Health variance, yeah.
Board of Health grant to variance for this particular submission.
Correct.
Do we have that decision?
I think that you have the plans, not the decision. I'm not sure that I've actually seen the decision, Bill McLeod obtained that.
There has to be one, right? So, so with the Conservation Memo as referencing with respect to setbacks, the no, the seventy-five no build and the fifty foot no, non-disturbed, those are conservation related issues?
Correct.
In terms of the...
Yeah.
The delineation.
Those will absolutely have to be, have to be dealt with, with Conservation.
That could change, that could change your plans?
Um...
In terms of, right?
Could, we...
For example, Frankie, you haven't, if you haven't approved septic plan with Board of Health, but then the setbacks come up at the Conservation level, does that then cause you to have to modify what was approved at the Board of Health?
I don't, as long as the, as long as the delineation was in fact, the same delineation, it should not impact the Board of Health variance.
Yeah.
Will need separate Conservation approval.
But does this affect your set, your Conservation setbacks in terms of what you proposed for structures, the fifty and the seventy-five?
I, I, I believe it all complies, but I can tell you this much, is if, if my, if, if my assumption is correct, that we're violating the Conservation, you know, you granting a variance for this particular plan in this particular setback, isn't going to control whether or not we can, we comply with Conservation, that's going to be...
I agree, I agree with you on that. But my question is, the plan that's submitted, based on the Conservation setbacks that you believe they are, do these setbacks that have been referenced in the memo, because you haven't been to Conservation yet.
Correct.
So do these change the configuration of your plan?
I, I do not believe so. My understanding from Bill McLeod is that, no, they don't.
But according to Jennifer, I think they do.
Well, that's what I... But it's a, it's still a Conservation issue.
Correct.
Right.
And the reason why you're here is why?
We're here for the, the zoning variance for the contiguous buildable area. That's the only reason...
The way I understand it, you want to combine, you're here because you want to combine three lots into two.
Correct.
Understood.
Two more conforming lots than three non-conforming.
Right, we want to take three very non-conforming lots and make them into two more conforming lots.
Less conforming, right. The less conforming.
But I agree with you, you have to build on one of them anyway.
And then he has to go to the appropriate boards, be it the sanitation board and the Conservation, after you do this. I say, let's get the ball rolling. It's as simple as that. What he's looking for is a lot line changes, correct?
Correct, well...
You can do that without the Board grading you or anything.
You can change the lot lines anyway. You could change the lot lines of the planning board, it'd just be standard building.
Right, I mean, I, I think, you know...
Why are you here then?
Right, we need, we do know that we need further relief, but we don't need further relief from this board, we need further relief from Conservation. We're going to have to request waivers or variances from Conservation, that's, you know...
You're looking for relief for contiguous building.
Solely for contiguous. Solely for contiguous buildable area.
Yeah. It's still not conforming, it still doesn't conform in that regard. But, I mean, I, I see the point that you can, your plans, both of the dwellings, proposed dwellings, are outside of the fifty-foot no-build zone. The decks are outside that, so, I mean, the septics are outside of that. It seems plausible to me that Conservation would be-
Immeasurable to those changes.
It, it seems like a plausible point.
You would think.
You would think.
Well, you kind of built on one of the lots already, right?
Yeah.
In theory, pretty much.
D is the worst.
The one you're being taxed on?
Yeah.
D.
No, D is the worst currently.
Yeah, it's got the wetlands right through the center.
But you do have the frontage.
I didn't, I didn't tell you, we stated it earlier, but the wetlands going through that lot were not there twenty years ago. That's a lot of pushback from Duncan Drive, and it's a runoff from the swamp in the back, or the wetland in the back.
Yeah, they change.
Yeah.
They change over the years, I know. All right, well, how many folks are here on this application, abut us? Would you all like to be heard? Just name and address for the record, sir.
I own a land at the back of their property.
Okay.
On Duncan Drive. I had sixteen acres, you know, with the two acres owning, I lost half of my, you know, buildable lots.
Can I ask, I'm sorry, can you speak up just a tad, just a little bit, so I could hear you? I'm getting old.
Of that, I'm getting old too.
Actually, if you speak it to the microphone, we can't, it doesn't make it louder.
Oh, you can't hear it.
No, no.
I'm sorry, what was your, was your address again?
I live at sixteen thirty-four Salem Street.
Sixteen thirty, but you're in a butte?
I am butte of Donovan's, the back of their property, Duncan Drive, and then me.
Is that?
Adams.
Adams.
Adams, okay.
Okay.
So, I lost half of my acreage for buildable lots because of the two acres owning. So, if you give them a variance to make two lots, you should only give them a variance for one lot for two acres, because there's not enough land yet. If you give it to them, then I should be it, you know?
Did you apply for anything?
Oh, no, I haven't applied anything, I'm just, I see what's going on.
When the zoning changed, right, is that what you're saying?
Well, the zoning change was a while ago.
Yep.
And I thought I was grandfathered in, but after three years, you don't do anything, you lose that grandfather.
Yep, so you, I'm looking at your lot here on the plan, you have, you have an access to, it looks like you're also on Boxford Street, right?
No, nothing on Boxford Street, you go in Stone Cleve, and I have frontage.
It looks like you've got frontage on Boxford Street too, on this plan, it says Adams.
I don't think so. On Duncan Drive, I got frontage fifty-foot right away, and then on Duncan Drive, I mean, Stone Cleve, I got three lots quarter ways in.
Yep.
Which I used to have one-acre lots, now they're two-acre lots, so I lost half of my. I have nothing against the Donovan's, if they can get it, I should be able to get it, that's all I'm concerned about.
Well, you have to ask for the same thing that the Donovan's are asking for. You don't have an application before us.
Oh, no, 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 I'm just concerned, if he gets it, I should be able to get it.
I understand your point.
Are you asking for variance in lot size?
No, in fact, it's actually kind of just the opposite, because what we're doing is, we're taking what is undersized, and we're making them fully comply with two acres owning.
So, you do have two acres on each lot, one and two, that it's-
Correct, the new lots are, in fact, each going to be two acres.
So, you know what he's doing, you understand that, in terms of, they're combining their lots to make less.
But they only have three to begin with.
And making two.
And they're making two, there's not enough land to make two, to be two acres.
No, they're, well, just to be clear with the board, we are, we're making, we're combining the lots in such a way as so that they will fully comply with lot size, each of the two new lots will be in excess of two acres.
So, they're, they're making two-acre lots, but what they're looking for the relief on is the contiguous buildable area within the lot, right?
Correct.
Which is, to a ratio from upland.
So, because of the, the wetlands on, on the lots, they can't build in a certain portion of it, so they're requesting relief just for, to build on those, on those lots. They're not requesting relief to make them two acres. They request, no, no. So, there's a different kind of variance that they're asking for, they're asking to build on something, we're required to have a certain amount of land housed to land ratio. So, they're required, they're requesting to relieve that is basically what they're trying to do.
So, they're going to make two acres, the two-
Two lots?
Two, two-acre lots.
Yep, in excess of each is going to have two acres and two acres on each lot.
There's not enough land yet, there's only three lots, three one-acre lots. I don't understand.
Maybe he could show the-
Can someone show him a plan?
The plan, and you can see it more clearly.
Here, lot C is-
Here, give him this one right there.
Lot C is seventy-eight thousand square feet. This one's fifty-eight thousand square feet, so they're all-
You see over here, the three lots, one, two, three, okay. What he's going to do is combine these three lots into these two. Okay, now, and if you see each lot, this is approximately ninety thousand square feet, this is approximately ninety-one square feet.
Ninety-one thousand, yeah.
Okay, so, way in excess, right? I mean, the two-acre lot would be what, about eighty-one thousand square feet, you know, forty-two, forty-two?
Go through the shot.
No, they're, they're in excess of the, of the, yeah, the ninety-one and ninety. Okay, see, they're taking these three-
Right.
And making two.
It's the upland area, meaning the non, the non-wetland area-
You see, over here in this lot, he can't build at all because it's all wetlands.
Right, there's a brook.
Right, yeah, and there's a brook right there. So, what he's trying to do is hit, with the remaining land that's quote "not wet," he's asking for a variance to do that.
So, it wouldn't affect me at all, then?
No effect on you at all. No effect on you.
Down the road.
No, even down the road, okay?
Right, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Vaughn, I can send you a bill tomorrow?
Hi.
Good evening, Chris Koloris, five-two-five Boxford Street, North Andover. I live directly across the street from this proposed construction. I'm not necessarily in favor of voting on this variance at this time. As has been stated, there is a lot of wetlands. I know, I live there. My concern is that there is a culvert that runs almost the entire length of the backside of the property. There's a pipe that runs underneath Boxford Street in two locations. One of those empties directly onto my property.
I'm sorry?
But you're across the street.
You said Chris?
Chris Koloris.
Yeah, I'm just looking for you on the buttes.
Michelle and Chris Koloris.
Michelle.
Five-two-five Boxford.
Five-two-five, got you, thanks, sorry.
I just, I really feel that this needs to go before the Conservation Commission first. I do think there are going to be a lot of questions there, and as I said, my, you know, my concern is runoff, and the fact that this, that this pipe system runs directly onto my land, so I would, I would have a direct impact from-
But you live across the street.
I live directly across the street.
Does the pipe go under the road?
It goes under the road, in two locations. The other location drains onto my neighbor's property.
Like a culvert, some kind of culvert?
He's not here tonight.
You mean a culvert of some kind?
Yes. Yes.
Yeah.
But that would all be Conservation issues.
Yes, which is why I would like to see this-
But you would have your opportunity at Conservation meeting to express all these concerns, the runoff and the building.
Right, like you stated, you were wondering what the purpose of this was, tonight.
Which is the acreage issue.
Yes, I thought it was also CBA.
Yeah, CBA.
Yeah.
CBA.
Which actually is, you know, it's a direct offshoot of how much, how much water, how much wetlands is, is involved. I mean, that is my concern, is the wetlands.
Okay.
Thank you.
Got it. Anybody else? All right, anybody else from the board want to discuss anything?
I can't fault the man for trying to take three unbuildable lots, trying to make two, and trying to make a bucking claim language, right, and improve the area a little bit. And all the issues that are being talked about as far as the wetlands and everything else, that's what Conservation's here for. Let them flex their muscles.
Well, yeah, I mean, the role, I mean, the roles are somewhat different.
I mean, I can understand the man's apprehension, but let him do it at Conservation, not over here at zoning.
Yeah.
Okay. I mean, if you go out there, you're going to see the pipe, Conservation is not going to miss the pipe, right?
Hopefully not. As long as it's on the land.
Yeah, yeah.
There are two pipes.
There are two.
Two colors.
Yeah, but they'll have to provide all that for Conservation. And Conservation, I'm going to assume, will take a site visit, and they'll see the pipes.
So, you haven't, you haven't filed with Conservation yet, or do they not accept your application?
No, no, we have not filed.
They haven't accepted either?
No. Do you, do you want to file with Conservation?
I do think that it's a separate issue that needs to be addressed by Conservation. I don't, you know, I'm not familiar with the culverts themselves, I don't know if they're even on our property, if they're town-owned culverts, and if they're in the right of way, which is what is typically the case, and, you know, we're going to need to deal with Conservation in, in any event, but, you know, my, my, my sense is that it's, it's two separate issues. One is, do we have a build, a building lot that we're looking to, to deal with, and then, within those constraints, we need, will, will need to address the, the Conservation Commission's issues.
Well, do you go to planning too? You're, you're not going to planning, right?
No, we're going to planning as well on this, but just for the A and R.
Just for the A and R, so that's-
But we're not in the water, they only, we're not in the watershed on this, so we wouldn't be-
So, so, you know, what I look at it in is, I kind of look at it as two issues. Whether you can, whether you have the contiguous buildable area to have a potentially buildable lot is one thing, but what you want to build, I look at it as something else as well, because if you're not going anyplace else, you know, I like a little bit more information on the style, the structure, landscaping, what it, what it is it's supposed to look like, you know? I mean, so, to me, I can bifurcate the issue as to the contiguous buildable area, but I'm, I'm a little hesitant on the actual footprint of a structure that I don't know a lot about.
Right, well, so we did, we did, I guess I would say two things. One, the footprint, I think, is taken from the septic design plans, so-
Yeah, something's driving that.
And so, that is, is, is where that's, you know, derivative of, and then, you know, we did submit kind of, you know, you know, I don't, we submitted some sketch plans, conceptual, it's not a very detailed plan, but it's, they're actually prepared by Tom Zerico, just to give you a sense of, of-
Yeah, that, you know, I, I mean, I need, I need, I need something more in the context of what you're proposing to put there, does it fit in the neighborhood, what's it going to look like?
Oh, yeah, have you seen the, the-
Have you seen it?
The renderings that we included?
Well, yeah, but that's not really enough, right? That's, that's, that's-
Okay, here's lot one, and here's lot two.
That's a little light, that's a little light conceptually, right?
I don't know, like you said, it's just a-
Terms of building plans for variance.
So, the options are basically to withdraw it, or continue it until you meet a consecration, if you have more solid area. I, I would lean towards withdrawing it, so.
I, I don't know, I don't know.
Because I don't think as a board that we have the jurisdiction to-
I don't know if I necessarily agree with that in totality. I mean, I don't think-
Of course you don't.
Well, look, I think you have, your options are, you could ask for a vote, you could continue, you could ask more information. I mean, I understand the contiguous buildable area, I understand what you're doing, so I, I just, you know, and it makes sense in the context of going from three lots to two, whether that, one of those lots is effectively buildable or not is up for discussion, but I don't know if you have to go to Conservation first or come back, because they're a different issue.
Right.
Their role is different than ours. What we're looking at is, does the soil shape and topography of your application, you know, create a hardship in your lot to drive the request for variance of contiguous buildable area? That's what you have to prove, right? That's your burden.
I-
Effectively driven by the wetlands, okay? At the same token, I like to see a little bit, when you're more than creating a lot, you're setting a footprint. And so, that's where I like more information, you know, in the context of perhaps a continuance, you know?
Mm-hmm.
To me, to me, there's not enough in here for me to want to say, "Okay, I'll set your footprint." I can, I can probably buy into your contiguous buildable area, no footprint scenario, but I need, you know, a couple of sketches, it's just not enough for me, if you're not going anyplace else. If that's not something reviewable on that plan.
If I may ask, in terms of the variance, this is a request for a dimensional variance, not a special permit, so-
It is.
Typically, when, it is, sorry, it is what?
I agree with you.
So, typically, when we get into the realm of the special permit, we have more jurisdiction in terms of the con, the character of the neighborhood and the things you're speaking of, whereas when we're talking about just dimensional variances, it's really, it doesn't get into that, it's soil shape topography.
Well, I mean, it just, I think it depends on what the submission is, and, you know, the boards have broad discretion, you know, in terms of, the request of a variance isn't by right, so to the extent that the applicant feels as though it bolsters their argument, they're apt to want to submit it. You know, if that's something that the board feels as though they need, they don't need, that's, that's within the board's discretion as well. So, you know, I'm just, I'm only talking in the context of what I, what I would need. I'm not speaking for anybody else, because obviously, variances require four votes. But you're right, you know-
What specifically is not shown, or what is this lacking for you? I mean, there's no, like, building height shown, but they're not asking, well, I guess there is on these drawings.
They're not asking for that.
But they're not asking for a dimensional variance related to height, so we have to make some assumptions here that-
They're also not stamped, they're also not certified, they're sketches, they're sketches. You can't get a building, you can't get a building permit on sketches.
Right.
Right? So, you know, I mean, it's conceptual, it's conceptual at best. This is what it may look like.
Absolutely, it's a conceptual plan, I, I mean, I mentioned-
I don't know how it's oriented on the lot, even though what the topography of the lot is, so, you know, in, in the context of-
Yeah, I mean, it's, it is, I can tell you that these, these concept plans were, again, they were drawn by, by Tom Zerico, they actually, I think, do-
That's a lovely job.
What's that?
That's a very nice job.
Yeah, and they, they, I only mention that just because I think you're familiar with the types of homes he builds, and that's, that's what is contemplated.
But they look, you know, and they look like nice colonial designs, but, you know, in the, in the context of how you're getting in, how you're getting into this lot, what is it looking like? Because, because there's no other, there's effectively no other review process.
Well, right, except, what I was going to say is, like, those were specifically drawn around the shape contour of the lot, and then specifically, if you look at the, the septic design plans that were approved and submitted, which, which show the driveway and, and the footprint as well.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, and I'm not trying to be difficult, Al, I understand what you're looking for, and I'm not, I'm not saying that, you know, we're- and I'm not, I'm not saying that, you know, we're not willing to do it, I'm just trying to...
I don't think you're going to be difficult, I, I'm just...
No, I, I...
I mean, it's clear to me, I mean, I've also far to say, I mean, I understand how the let, the wetlands are affecting your lot. I have no doubt there's a lot of water. I have no doubt there's a lot of runoff over there. I drive the road often, you know, so, I mean, I'm familiar with the area. And, you know, I mean, I did hear some concerns about the neighbor in terms of wanting to know where the water's going. I do see a hundred-foot buffer zone outside of where you want to put that lot two on one of your plans, so I know that perhaps the totality of what you want to build there is within that buffer zone, maybe outside of the 50, but inside of the 100. You know, so, there's definitely, I mean, you're, you're going to be subject to a lot of review, I suspect, at the conservation level.
Absolutely.
If the memo was any indication.
So here's, here's my issues. So you're requesting a dimensional variance, which you don't need anyways from us. You can do it yourself, you don't need to have those lot lines done. You don't need a variance from the zoning board to change the lot lines. So why are you requesting that?
Because of the buildable area.
Well, we need the, we need the...
But you're asking for two things in your application. The application is a legal notice, the petition's requesting dimensional variances.
Right, for the contiguous buildable area.
A variance is also requested for minimum CBA. So that's, when I see also, that means two of the different variances you're asking for?
Well, there's two different lots, so there's one for each lot.
I think the notes is just misleading, Colin.
Is it?
Yeah.
So you're just asking for the CBA, that...
Yeah, just look, we're just...
Your plans are not according to gen, they're not a correct plan.
It says, yeah, it says on the notice... Because what I'm hearing is contradicting, what I'm reading and hearing is contradicting one another. It says, a variance is requested for lot area pursuant to section 7.1 and table 2. But you're stating clearly that you're not, you're not submitting a variance for lot area.
No, then, if you, if you look at the two applications, they're just, they're the same application, and they're really just about CBA. It's the same application, just for two addresses.
So that statement is not right?
I think it's just, yeah, I think it's just worded awkwardly in the notice.
Yeah, and, and I think in part, it was also just tying it back to the denial, the, the variance denial, remember, we're dealing with three lots that don't currently comply, so I think the denial referenced the, the lot size, but the lot size is being corrected by virtue of the proposed A and R plan at the same time.
So I'm going to ask again, because...
We're just...
According to her letter, the, the, your plans are not correct. So what you're asking for might not be the correct relief, so...
Well...
I'm a little confused at that, so can you help clarify that?
Yeah, I, I'm, I just got this memo at 4:15 tonight.
We got it at 7:30, so, yeah, we try to have a little bit of that.
But I, I, again, I'm, you know, what, I, she says that they don't reflect the correct delineation of, of, of the wetlands. And to my knowledge, based on, when I got this, the first thing I did was I called Bill McLeod, and Bill said, there was no change in the wetlands, the wetlands as shown on the plan are correct.
That could, could, it's possible it could affect your CBA, though, in terms of a wetland delineation, in terms of what you're requesting for relief, maybe?
Well, it's possible if, if we have, if the wetland line changed from what was on, on the plan, which is what Bill suggested had not happened.
I have it underlined in bold.
I, I have the same copy, not what you do, so...
So, to me, I'm hesitant to grant anything that is conflicting, so...
I, I understand, and, you know, my, my sense is that it's probably appropriate to request a continuance. I think in the context of what we were doing, though, I, I'm, I want to make sure that, you know, for the next meeting, we address everyone's potential issues or concerns, and I was hearing some issues from, from Al with respect to plans.
Well, I mean, that, you know, I, I say that often, when I see applications like this, if they're not, if...
You want to know what you're proving, I understand.
I sure do, I mean, I don't, I sure do. I mean, I, like I said, I, I can buy into the CBA component, I can see that. I can see you're making three lots more conforming, but I need to see what that final result is in totality. You may want to concurrently go to conservation and try to address a lot of this stuff, since you're within the hundred foot on one of them anyway, you know, and they may not take any final action until we act, but at least you could try to get some things locked down on that delineation line and, and, and the water, and the stormwater aspect, so we could, you know, we can understand it, I would think. But, you know, I, I do think that it's, they're competing, or I do think they're different, you know? Conservation's role is certainly different than our role in terms of...
Well, I, I, I agree. I mean, you could very well say, yes, we approve, and conservation could still say, you know, no, we, we don't, for whatever reason. I mean, it's different board, different issues.
That happens.
Yeah, and, and, yeah, very well might, and, and I think my client's aware of that. But that being said, as just a matter of progression and cost and expense, it makes sense for my client, and part of the reason, you know, we're here is because, you know, I, I think when he originally was dealing with, with Bill McLeod, it was like, well, starting point is, if you can't get the septics, then you don't even want this. And then, after he has the septics, it's, well, you know, you got to look at the, the zoning issues and, and the CBA.
Why don't you, why don't, I mean, my, my suggestion would be, I don't want to lead you astray. My suggestion would be, perhaps you continue to our next meeting and try to have some of these issues addressed...
Right.
For the board, for the, and the abutis, for the next meeting, you know, as it relates to, to the culverts and all the detail in the plan, and which delineation line is, controls whether it's relevant or not.
Yeah, it may be helpful as well to, if we do continue to have, see if we can get, get Bill or someone from, from his office here as well.
I mean, if, if you need him, I mean, I, I can see, based on the plan, how the wetlands are driving the CBA. I mean, I don't want to speak for everybody else, so, I can see that. So to me, it's just, it's really cleaning up the other issues. You know, the culverts and the water, I mean, it's something different.
Yeah.
I mean, my, my two cents in regards to conservation is not really my jurisdiction here, but I would venture to suggest that you might want to address the neighbor's concerns with rainwater retention ponds, which I don't see on the plans, and that type of a thing, which seems to be like standard practice for this type of a scenario. I'm less concerned, I mean, I wish I could have fun on a design review board, but our town doesn't have a design review board. So whatever, whatever you come back with that's different than this is irrelevant to me. I mean, it could be the same footprint, with a flat roof, or whatever, I mean, that's not our board's jurisdiction, so I think, whatever, I'll leave it at that. I mean, that's, that's not, that's not our charge here.
Well, it's a fit, I mean...
And who's, who's to say what fits in the neighborhood? I mean...
Well, we are.
Well, but on what basis do you make a, a value judgment on that? Just based on, like, based on what?
Based on what I see. That's how I'm going to decide it.
This, this is just a philosophical kind of, you know, difference, that you, you don't think that there's any design review element to the CBA, and Al would suggest, and I would side with Al on this one, that, and an applicant that comes before any board that is seeking any kind of relief suddenly falls into the trap of, it's entirely possible that the board is going to ask for something that is not necessarily strictly conservation or strictly zoning, and we're going to get into the design stuff.
I don't want to get into the role, I mean, as a designer view, I mean, I hear you, and I, I agree with you on, on most, on most of what you're saying. I, I just want to have a comfort level in terms of what's, what's proposed and what's potentially approved in the context of that footprint. You know, I just...
I mean, well, in my last piece on that, I would be like, if I'm going to evaluate the design of the structure, I'll be looking at, like, which way is the roof pitch to send water towards the retention pond, and, and I'll be evaluating it from that point of view. And so, whether it's a, whether it's a pretty colonial box...
You know?
I mean, to me, that's not doing anything constructive in terms of this site. If I were to say, like, let's design something contextual to achieve, like, something to do with in a budding concern, then that would be like a piece of architecture that I could evaluate. But colonial box isn't contextual in any way, it's just saying, like, there you go, there's, evaluate that, I mean...
Yeah, I'm keeping this real simple, I mean, you show me what you're going to build, and when I drive down the street, I'm going to stop and look at the land, and I'm going to look at what's around it, you know, and that's really how I'm going to do it. I'm, I don't have a lot of time, free time to, like, you know, design whatever, I just want to see what it's going to look like, you know?
Can I put my two cents worth in?
Yeah, sure.
Too much government. Too much government. You think the man's going to put a mobile home on this lot? Okay, you think he's going to put a mobile home on this lot?
No.
Okay, he's going to spend all the money for cultivation, zoning, and, and planning, okay, and for lawyers, and drops, and, and, and wetlands flagging, you think he's going to put a mobile home, he's going to put a beautiful home on that lot?
I can't believe that guy is saying too much government.
And we don't have a design review board in this town, thank God.
I don't know what he has against lawyers.
You guys are making a mountain out of them all, too much government.
I'm really more of a Jeffersonian, to tell you the truth.
So build it in the middle of the night, okay?
And I don't think you'd be doing a septic design issue.
Hey, if I was him, I would put a mobile home and piss everybody off.
Septic, they don't, mobile homes don't have septic designs.
It's too much government to tell us a 40B that you object to, and then you're glad to be a part of it, and then you're going to say no.
All right, all right.
So...
So, I think we'll request a continuance. Yeah, but we'd like to request a continuance.
Okay.
For the one month, November 14th?
I honestly don't think you'll be ready, so you, if you, in the event in November, then you can continue it again.
See who you are.
So then I'll make a motion, Mr. Chair, to continue this matter to November 14th.
I'll second that.
Motion second, any discussion hearing that, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, you stand continued. We have the chapel letter. Where is the chapel? Just going to go out of order real quick, I'm just going to, there is a chapel letter that has come in that will, the town's intent to, dated August 28th, with the intent to sell a affordable unit at Oak Ridge Village. If anybody has any interest in that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, the next meeting is the petition of Varsity Wireless. Just for the record, I am recusing myself from this particular application, so Ms. McIntyre will be acting as the chairperson. If you could just give me a moment to collect my things and leave, so just let the record go.
Chapel letter done? Okay.
Good evening.
All right, did anyone else need to take a two-second break? Are we all good, continue on?
Let's go, it's getting late.
I'm good.
So, I'm covering this, so next on the agenda is, the last new public hearing would be Varsity Wireless.
Notice is hereby given that the Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing at Town Hall at 120 Main Street, North Endover, Massachusetts, on Tuesday, October 10, 2017, at 7:30 PM to all parties interested in the petition of Varsity Wireless Investors LLC, or owner Stephen V. Young for property 122 Foster Street, MAP 104D, parcel 26, North Endover, Massachusetts, 01845, in the R1 zoning district. Buckle in, everybody. The petitioner is requesting five variances in accordance with the sections of the zoning bylaw to construct a 130-foot monopole, 135-foot defile branches in an R1 zoning district. 8.9.3C CV1 setbacks, actual right side, 135 feet required, 600 feet, variance at 465 feet. 8.9.3 point C point 51 setbacks, actual front, 173 feet required, a 600 feet, variance of 427 feet. 8.9.3C 51 fall zone, actual right side is 135 feet, required as 270 feet, variance of 135 feet. 8.9.3C V1 fall zone, actual front is 173 feet, required as 270 feet, variance of 97 feet. 8.9.3CI height general, proposed 135 feet, allowed 45 feet, variance requested, I'm sorry, variance required 90 feet. 8.9.3 point C Romanate 2, height ground-mounted facilities, proposed at 135 feet, allowed 45 feet, variance required 90 feet. 8.9.4 point A Romanate 2, camouflage by vegetation required 50 feet, proposed interpretation by board required. 8.9.4 point A point Romanate 3 2, color of facility, proposed brown and green, monopine, variance required from blue or gray. Application supporting materials are available for review at the offices of the zoning department located at 120 Main Street, North Endover, Massachusetts, Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday, from the hours of 8 to 4, Tuesday, from the hours of 8 to 5:30, and Friday, from 8 to 11:30. By order of the Board of Appeals, Albert P. Manzi III, Esquire Chairman.
Okay, so you guys, if you could just say your name and address for the record when you speak.
Sure, good evening, Brian Roseman, Anderson Krieger, 50 Milk Street, 21st floor, Boston, Massachusetts, on behalf of the applicant, Varsity Wireless.
My name is Chris Sweniarzki, I'm an attorney with McLean Middleton, representing Verizon Wireless. My address is 900 Elm Street, Manchester, New Hampshire.
No one's representing AT&amp;T?
I don't believe AT&amp;T has...
AT&amp;T is not a formal co-applicant, they just made some supporting, some supporting information.
Okay.
But they're not a formal co-applicant at this point.
Because they're on your application, they're on all your...
They, they are, they're not a formal, actually, Verizon's not a formal co-applicant, so the application is only by Varsity Wireless. Obviously, there's, the information and support is being provided by Verizon Wireless most heavily, and then AT&amp;T is an interested party, and their information is certainly relevant, but that's why they've, they've been mentioned. But the application is solely by Varsity.
Okay, that's good.
I won't go back through all the relief that, that's, that's been read. Generally, it breaks down into a couple of different categories. One is height, and a couple of different provisions from the, the wireless bylaw relating to height for ground mounted facilities. The other has to do with setbacks, both the tower height setback to property line, as well as the 600-foot setback to a residentially zoned or utilized property. Obviously, the property itself is in a residential zone, so, and surrounded by, by residential areas, residentially zoned areas, so obviously, a variance would be required from that. There were two variances that are included in part because it's not clear from the bylaw whether or not they are truly applicable, but since there is no, as a couple of my clients have painfully learned over the years, there's no estoppel from a building determinate, building inspector's determination that's wrong. And given the way I was reading the, interpreting the bylaw, it made sense to include them. And so that's the, the, what I call the vegetation provision, which has to do with, I mean, you need vegetation either 50 feet or 75 percent, and it's worded that way. It doesn't say greater of or lesser of, it just says 50 feet or 75 percent, so not clear which, which provision applies. Based on the, again, based on the way that provision is worded, it doesn't really give any sort of distance. So the way the property is configured, the way the vegetation on the property is laid out, we think we comply with that provision, but again, it's, it's one of those interpretations that is best left up to the board, since we were going to be here anyway, rather than run the risk that we don't meet that requirement and have to come back and file again. We've included it for discussion with the board and the request, just in case. Same with color. Again, color is not something some bylaws provide for, you know, for waiver, the, you know, the Endover bylaw provides for waiver of submission requirements, but not... know, Andover bylaw provides for waiver of submission requirements, but not design guidelines, and Varsity Wireless has proposed a monopine, as read in the notice, so given that it's proposed monopine, it is, the tower is brown, the faux branches will be brown, the faux pine needles will be green, and antennas will be, will be painted, you know, accordingly as well, but the bylaw requires something that exceeds the height of the vegetation to be painted light blue or gray. Obviously, with a proposed monopine, that would completely defeat the proposed camouflage and make the facility more obvious, not less obvious, so again, we've included that in part because it doesn't create that there's any other way from, under the bylaw, to get relief from it, um, other than that for the variance. We've included, see a bunch of habits, the zoning application package, we've gone through all the relief that's requested, all of the criteria, you know, and addressed those in the supporting statement, so I'll leave it to the board a little bit in terms of how deep you want me to go into talking about the criteria, but for those who may not have been with us when we were at the planning board, we've seen one or two new faces, in general, just, I know the board may have seen this, Varsity is proposing what we call a monopine, so the monopole tower is proposed to be camouflaged to appear as if a pine tree. The tower itself is one-hundred-and-thirty feet to the top, the faux branches extend up to one-hundred-and-thirty-five feet. All of the relief that we have requested, both in terms of height, in terms of setback calculations where they are a function of height, that two times tower height setback, are done to the top of the branches, not to the top of the monopole, because they are in a pertinence, and under the, under the bylaw, that is considered part of the, the tower, so we have included that in terms of the calculations for relief. Facility is designed to accommodate at least five wireless communications carriers. Verizon Wireless is obviously interested, they represented it here, have had some interest from AT&amp;T, and have the authority to show to you what their propagation looks like. Of course, obviously, there are additional carriers, T-Mobile, Sprint, and other carriers that are in the market. So, in accordance with the overall requirements to provide for co-location, we've designed it to accommodate up to five wireless communications carriers, both from a structural standpoint, as well as from a compound size standpoint. Compound itself is slightly irregularly shaped, so it's just short of four thousand square feet. It is surrounded by a six-foot stockade fence, again, has room for AT&amp;T's equipment, if they're a co-locate Verizon Wireless, three additional co-locators as well. In terms of distance, it's fifty-six feet to the nearest property line from the compound, but one-hundred-and-twenty-seven feet, and one-hundred-and-twenty-seven feet, feet to the front property line, again, from the compound. Towers shifted both back, a little bit extra from the front, as well as to the side, and so that's how we meet the, or we get to one-hundred-and-thirty-eight feet from the tower to the nearest property line, as well as one-hundred-and-seventy-three feet to the, to the front property.
Before you go on that, can you tell me the highest height of, um, a box, one of the components that you have on the bo, on there? Because your fence is six feet, I just wanna make sure your box isn't going over your, your fence.
The boxes are not taller than six feet, the...
See, you have the rare privileges, I helped write this bylaw.
I, the compound isn't visible from, from the public way, but I think in terms of, just to answer the question.
Because that's...
There's a, the, the shelter is, is it tall?
How, I'm sorry, was that?
So the Verizon equipment cabinets are four feet tall?
They're right around four feet tall, speaking for Verizon, we, we no longer do the shelters that you've probably been accustomed to. Right now, our technology has been changing and evolving over the past few years, and we've been fortunate enough to, I wouldn't say that we developed the components, but maybe developed the networks that are able to utilize components where we no longer need those large shelters. In most cases, we have cabinets, the cabinets are right around four feet tall, some of them might be like, more like fifty or fifty-two inches, but, but under five feet.
Okay.
And the AT&amp;T cabinets are shorter than five? Unfortunately, shorter than six feet. So briefly gone through the relief in terms of the, the height that was required, the, the height variance, again, there, you have three things at play, there's two different provisions for the bylaw that I don't need to currently explain to this McIntyre. In terms of height, there's general, and then there's ground mounted facilities, and when you put those provisions together, you end up with a couple of different height requirements. One is, um, height of the average one-story building within three hundred feet of the tower, can't be more than ten feet above that, at one-hundred-and-thirty-five feet, we're certainly above the one-story building, within, a couple of one-story buildings that are on the property, those are the buildings that are within three hundred feet. The ten feet above the thirty-five foot height limit permitted in the residential one zoning district, see that by more than ten feet. The tree canopy one, um, is, you're not allowed to be more than ten feet above the average tree canopy, we did have a tree survey done, that's included in the package, and they have measured the average tree canopy in one of two ways. One is the overall mean height, which is fifty-six-point-five to eighty-nine-point-one is the average. Meanwhile, they've also given us kind of the general average of the highest trees in the area as well, because that's certainly relevant, when you're talking about radio frequency propagation, and whether or not it's going to block, um, propagation from the tower, and that ranges from sixty-eight feet to one-hundred-and-six-point-three, again, regardless of which one you use, at one-hundred-and-thirty-five feet, you exceed it by more than ten feet, so we've included the request for relief for that. In general, the facility is consistent with the requirements for camouflage by utilizing the, the monopine. There is a provision concerning, when you're talking about height, if it's camouflaged, it's considered camouflage, then certain height provisions may not apply, and I think typically, my understanding is that's been interpreted somewhere with like a church steeple, and not so much with a, a monopine, but again, regardless, we've made sure to include all of that variance relief.
I, I think it was clear that a tower, as opposed to an exist, is this existing, excuse me, structure, I think it was clear that it was, defined that? A new tower, as opposed to a new pole, as opposed to an existing structure, was clearly defined in here, if I recall.
Yeah, we've asked, we've asked for it.
Okay.
Again, just to go back through the, the setback requirements, the two times tower height, eight-point-nine-point-three-C-V-Romanate-one includes actually both setback requirements, so it includes the two times tower height setback to the property line, as well as the six-hundred-foot, uh, setback to, uh, property zone four containing residential or educational uses. As I mentioned, the site itself is in an R-one district, it's surrounded by the R-one district, the nearest non-residential district is about a mile away, to the general business district, and near where Salem and Boxford Street and Foster Street all kind of come together. So, obviously, the six-hundred-foot setback to the facility won't be cited in a residential district. The, um, facility itself, again, tower's one-hundred-and-thirty-eight feet to the nearest property line, so more than, at least more than tower height, but it's not that two times tower height setback, it's one-hundred-and-seventy-three feet to the front lot, the front lot line to the south, it doesn't meet it to the other lot lines. We've talked about the camouflage by vegetation provision and color of the facility, I don't think, do you want me to go back through that? In general, a lot of these require, a lot of the, the justifications I've given here on this slide, obviously apply to all three or four different criteria under the variance standard, in terms of complying with it, in terms of the special conditions relating to the soil condition, shape, or topography of the land or structures. One, the location of the property within a significant gap in coverage for AT&amp;T and Verizon Wireless is in and of itself significant, one of, that's one of the things that, um, board, I think that this board knows is supposed to look at, in terms of whether or not the granting of the relief is necessary to fill a significant gap in coverage. We've given you the alternatives analysis that was done by Mr. Kelleher, he gets here if there are questions for him. There are no pre-existing structures upon which a carrier can locate in the area. The national grid lines to the far east, on the Boxford line, first of all, they are short wooden utility poles, and so the, you couldn't put a tower in that easement area, or in that, actually, it's national grid owned, but you couldn't put a tower in that area, it would actually not become far less, be far less compliant with setback requirements, but also from an extension standpoint, and sixty feet, you're below the mean tree average in the area generally, and so a facility in that area wouldn't work. You're really looking at proposing a new structure, we've tried to do that in a responsible way, you've seen the visual analysis, demonstrate it's really highly limited visibility with except, with the exception of a few views, one being certainly the ball field, I think I saw the, the chair looking at that earlier when I came in, and some of the more distant views as well, that were asked for by the planning board when we talked to, with them about doing visual analysis. Certainly, those, those more distant views are really gonna apply regardless of, of site that's proposed in this area.
I'm just gonna interrupt you, I'm sorry, because we did receive this packet, this was not in our packet, this was received tonight, so just for reference, if you look, this is what they're referring to with the, with the site.
Right, we get that tonight, right?
The balloon, yes. Up there it is.
I will go through all of them, but in, in general, again, you can see in a lot of instances, the monopine blends in very nicely, it's hidden, mostly from foster use, hidden fairly well from, or very well, really from surrounding properties.
So this is done before, before the trees drop, so it's, I mean, those are all oaks, maples, so if it was done in a month, it'd be quite different, just to let you know.
That's the ball field, and it was the same view the planning board had, relating to most concern over.
Love it, yeah.
The trade-off there, however, is by locating it on this side, as opposed to really something like the ball field or somewhere else where the impact on the ball field is less, the impact on surrounding properties is significantly less, for the people who live there year-round all the time, as opposed to the transient folks who are going to use the ball field for a short period of time, you know, with their kids, and then, then leave. In terms of balancing overall impact, we did try and reduce the impact on the folks that are going to be, you know, surrounding the facility and be in the facility all year, living there. Of course, one of the things we heard at the planning board from, the only person who spoke for Oregon was, was in favor, is that there is a lack of coverage in the area, whether outdoors or indoors, and this would certainly help alleviate that, helps alleviate it for folks on the ball field as well, who then may be able to, may have their nose in their phone, or videoing their child and beaming that somewhere else, so I think there's, we understand there's some concern about the impact there, but we think overall benefit in terms of overall location and minimizing impact to the vast majority of folks in the area. It was the best site and the only feasible site for us. Again, this is, one of those uses from far off in the distance, that really, almost any site in the area is going to have, is gonna have some visibility from that vantage point, because they're high up looking down. We did, there were some instances where we were asked to take photos, and it wasn't visible from that location, so we've done that as well. And again, this is, you know, up, up on Blue Ridge Road, far off in the distance, and given the location, any site in, in this area that's going to address this significant gap is going to have a similar type of U-shell. In terms of the six-hundred-foot setback, that requires a radius that equates basically twenty-six acres, and that's if it was a round property, not a square property, so increase that. Again, the only non-residential district, um, in the area is that one that's to the mi, that's about a mile to the west, it's a couple very, very small lots that are developed, there is no place that you could put a tower there to begin with, and that location is in the shadow of an existing tower that both AT&amp;T and Verizon are on, and so it would just provide duplicative coverage. So, any site that will address the significant gap in coverage here is going to need to be in the residential area, because as you can see in the, in the map that was provided, that whole area, including the entirety of the significant gap, is residentially zoned to all our line.
Does the town get any money, tax money? How's it taxed?
Don't know Andover's, or North Andover's.
Let's say Andover.
I didn't mean, I didn't mean it, I just, I don't know North Andover's.
Usually.
Process, but they, they, if they do, it's usually assessed as personal property, but that would be a matter for the assessor.
Have they taxed?
Yeah, we see them taxed frequently in many towns, it's a, it's a matter of your assessing department and how they choose to do it, but it's, uh, it's an improvement to the property.
Debatable.
Well, I was just gonna say, to some tax assessors, some will consider it as personal property, I, I've seen it both ways, but it, it is taxed in just about every town that I've seen.
So, I'm gonna answer your question, the town does not benefit as much as the homeowner would benefit, because the homeowner leases.
I'm sure leasing out the land.
Correct. So, unless it's town-owned property, like a facility we have up on Stevens Estate, the town gets the...
I was curious to question. You know, I would like to, you showed a lot of pictures, you said a lot of words, but with me seeing is believing, I would like to request a site review. Go out there, show me where you're gonna put this thing, show me where this generator's gonna be, okay? And, and I would get a better feeling, you know, putting some pants and some boots on, walking out there and seeing just where it's gonna be.
Sure, we can arrange it.
Is it what, is that where the goats are? Okay.
Goats?
He has goat, he's got goats and chickens.
Oh, are you the owner?
Definitely make sure you put the pants on there.
And the boots. But we can, we can certainly set up a site.
So, my question is, I'm, you're gonna continue on, why do you have to have it so close, so high, that's a sloped lot, and you're on the slope, and it makes it higher than, it appears higher than it actually, it could be less of a ISO, I guess, or, you know, from the field? Why, this is twelve acres, why can't you put it someplace else on this property, where you don't need as many variances, or any of that?
Uh, well, you're always gonna need the six-hundred-foot setback variance, and the...
But not seventy-five percent of a relief, or...
Well, the problem is, so the area where the facility is located is at one-hundred-and-eighty feet.
Yes.
A MSL, that property slopes down considerably towards the center, and then slopes back up towards the rear, to about one-hundred-and-fifty. So, the, the, the drop in the middle, first of all, you have to be, we have to be conscious of the uses on the property, but second, towards the rear, you have the wetland buffer as well, so that would push you more towards the center, as you draw, as you go to the center, and you have the, the height drop, or the, the ground elevation drop, the tower height would go up to compensate for that, to, in order, to get back up above the, the tree line and the clutter. So, in terms of height, being at the one-hundred-and-eighty foot, the high point on the property actually helps minimize the overall height required for the facility, by being on the highest point, helping get advantageous view above the tree line, and viewed up and down Foster Street and the surrounding area. So, if we have the drop in ground elevation, we'd be increasing tower height.
Because of coverage, is that what you're saying? Because you're not gonna get full coverage, as opposed to being right on the street, as opposed to being in, um, a couple hundred yards away? I'm, I'm not understanding.
But the couple hundred yard, it's not, it's not a straight line distance of a couple hundred yards, it's a straight line distance with, uh, somewhere between sixty and forty-foot elevation drop. The middle of the property is, is lower than, than the one-hundred-and-eighty, and it's lower than the rear of the property, which is only about one-hundred-and-fifty.
What's the middle of the property slope? I know it's in here, but... I, I, the re, you know why I'm asking, in order to have, you need to prove to me why I can't go anyplace else on this property. In order to have, you need to prove to me why I can't go anyplace else on this property? When you have, you know, close to 12 acres.
But it's also, it's also an oddly shaped pot, so it has.
It's pretty square to me.
So if you have sheet A1?
I do, but that doesn't show the slope.
No, it doesn't show the slope, but it does show the, I mean, the front of the lot is not, the lot isn't square by any means. And so the front.
I know there's one in here that has a topo on it.
Yeah, the, we do have one that has the topo, but it doesn't go all the way.
Not the whole thing, not the whole land, so.
Right, but so if you look at the front of the lot, it is somewhat jagged and so it pushes back into it. So if you take the two times tower height, you're pushing more towards, you are certainly trying to push towards the middle. And the middle is the lowest point of the property. And when you increase the elevation, you're going to end up needing variance relief from that regardless. You're still going to need variance relief to, there's buildings on the property. You're going, you're still going to need the variance relief from the 600 feet to a residentially-used property. You're still going to need height variance relief. And matter of fact, your height variance at that point is going to actually increase, not decrease. And.
Why?
Because the tower height is going to go up.
Because, I'm sorry, what's that?
Tower height will go up to compensate for the drop in elevation.
Why? If it drops, it's going to be 137 feet. So if it's going to be at 150 as opposed to 180 slope, why would you need to drop, why would you need to increase the height?
Because the, the ground elevation is, the current proposed height is a function in part of the ground elevation that it's located at. So it's at 180 feet A M S L, which is a high point in the area, which gives it, which gets it up above the tree line and gets it a vantage point up and down Foster Street and the surrounding area. If you move it down the slope, you're, and keep it at 130 feet, then the tree line and the clutter is going to get, in relation to the tower, taller. It's actually, the facility will actually end up being below the overall height of trees in the surrounding area because you're doing it at a low point. So to compensate for being in the valley, you'd have to push the tower height back up to compensate for the lost elevation that you're losing in relation to the coverage objective in the surrounding tree line.
Okay.
And so as you do that, you're always, you're going to end up needing setback variance regardless. Because the wetland buffer pushes you, again, you can't really put it towards the rear of the property where the 150, where it's 150 feet. Still be losing 30 feet of ground elevation, but it's at least not the low point of the property. But you, but the wetland buffer pushes you away from the rear of the property.
This road, this gravel road here? Have, do you have to apply to conservation for any disturbance of land runoff or anything?
No, it's outside of the wetland buffer. The wetland buffer is towards the back and right-hand side of the property, eastern side of the property.
How are you accessing the compound? How are you, through that?
Because you're going to need propane trucks to go there, right?
There's, there's an exist, there is an existing access to the property and then Varsity will spur off of that and create its gravel road or driveway accessway to the compound.
Through the existing driveway and then create a road through there? Because that is, I did go in, I actually drive that every day and every night. And I did go in today and no one was there, unfortunately. It's a very blind corner. So when you're coming up and around, I mean, it's, you can't see when you're pulling out. So is that the road they're going to come in and out? Trucks, Verizon trucks, whatever.
Steve Keller from Varsity Wireless. So we're going to, two points. We, I've been with the conservation agent out there with our biologist, Monica. For the application, she needed to sign off to make sure that we are in fact outside of any necessary relief that we would have to seek. So from my understanding, I don't know if she submitted a letter, but I know her recommendation was that we met. You know, we were outside any buffers that were necessary. I also, we scheduled a meeting a couple Saturdays ago with the planning board and they met. So if at any time, you know, I'm available on a Saturday or Sunday to morning to go out, or any other time really, but to go out and walk the property. The landowners have made it available for this type of issue. So anytime anyone wants to go out collectively, we can just put it on a schedule.
Can you answer my question?
Yeah, yeah, sorry, sorry. Just a couple of points that were addressed. So as far as a, the initial construction, so the driveway leading up to the house on the right. That's going to be the main entry point. But for the initial construction, there'll be some heavy equipment. But on the day-to-day, once a month, typically there's a pickup truck that goes out there. So the traffic is really minimal after the first, you know, four weeks of construction. But the initial, you know, everyone's going to be going in and out of that driveway.
This thing, this generator, it's accessed, it's supplied by electricity right from the street?
So we'll have our own power mounted transformer next to the compound. And so that will, and then we have a meter bank set up, usually a six-game meter.
So the generator is only for emergency should the power go out?
Right, and the event that the power goes out. And I think they kick on maybe once every 10 days for about 10 minutes just to keep them fresh, but.
Just to start them?
Right.
And I think you submitted a sound? See, I did read it.
So we did some good sound assessment to demonstrate that it will comply.
And what are the results of those?
The exact numbers, I mean, it does, it does comply.
So within guidelines, the standard guidelines of noise compliance would be a certain number and yours is?
Well, some, some bylaws have a specific one. Otherwise it's D E P, which is you can't increase it by, it can't be more than 70 dB at the property line or more than, increase it, or increase ambient by more than 10. I'm going to give you the exact results for this.
I think it is.
So.
It's a tab six.
Right, and on page 11, it gives you two different tables. One is just the predicted H V A C, which is the little kick on, you know, on and off all the time, you know, throughout the day. And the standard, the requirement is 50. The highest is the nearest property line to the east, which is 43 dB A. And with the generator, it's the same nearest property line is 50 dB A, which is the highest. Everything else is below that.
So at any one point in time, it won't exceed?
50 dB A at the nearest property line.
And the required level by, is what?
I think 50 dB A.
So you're at peak, you're at max. So you're at the level where it's just almost, that's loud.
It meets, but it meets the criteria.
It meets the criteria.
I'll give you a little background too.
And they do.
Done a lot of work on sound with other types of applications.
I just don't want anyone to be surprised.
Right, so 50 dB A is a number. I don't know if people are aware what that is. We're talking louder than that right now. You know, the engine that is in this is, if it's the biggest one that we use, I think it's like a 5.4-liter engine. It's going to be propane. We're talking about pickup truck sized. And it's in an enclosure. It's larger than your average home generator, but if this building has a backup generator, it's going to be smaller than that one. And again, it's only on, not even just when the power goes up. We typically have batteries and the generator will charge the batteries after the batteries are exhausted. So they're not running very frequently at all. But again, we're, the generators that we use are no different than generators that you have at many other buildings in town. They're very standard. And I think even when power goes out, if you drive around, I don't think anyone notices a generator nuisance when power is out. I've, you know, and it could depend. In a busy downtown area with a lot of them, you may, on a property like this, not likely. But I've done it, I've tried to listen for sort of the sounds of generators when, when power goes out. And if you listen closely, you may hear them where you have a lot of them. But in this particular instance, it's pretty minor and pretty typical as to what you would find in other locations with a backup power generator.
So that counts.
The generator doesn't run 24/7.
Correct.
It'll, you know, the maintenance side will be set to run, you know, in the middle of the day when it shouldn't have any sort of disturbing effect. So the sound, in terms of what we were talking about, in terms of ambient and everything else, was all done at night. So obviously it's the quietest point. So during the day, when things are louder, you have more car traffic, things like that, things that would mask, help mask the overall sound. To Chris's point, on page four of the sound assessment, they give kind of a chart of different types of things to give examples. As Chris mentioned, normal conversation like this is 60 dB. A moderate rainfall on foliage is 50 dB or something like a dishwasher in the next room. So, you know, in terms of, you know, overall impact from sound, you know, it'll be, it'll be minimal.
How did North Andover get chosen to be the recipient of this poll?
I'm sorry?
How did the town of North Andover get to be the lucky recipient of this tower?
Well, the significant gap in coverage is in North Andover. So this is Verizon Wireless's existing coverage. The blue pinwheel there, it says 117 feet, North Andover 7 is the site location. And that is the overall general coverage objective, which is Foster Street, Salem Street, Boxford Street, surrounding area, including the neighborhoods to the north reaching east towards Boxford. So the need, the need for coverage is entirely within North Andover.
Those other pinwheels, the other towers that are in the area?
There, so the, there are one, two, three, four black pinwheels. Those are existing facilities. I think almost all of them are towers. And then the black dots are Verizon Wireless small cells.
The black dots are what?
Verizon Wireless small cells.
Small cells?
Yeah.
Which are what?
Those are mounted on utility poles. They provide capacity, they're providing capacity, not coverage.
Like the little panels?
Yeah, 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 ISO.
The fact that this tower is providing coverage for the region, your neighbors do all have towers as well. I've done several of the, but I think we just did one in Andover last week, actually. But, you know, as Brian was saying, this is, you generally have to put these facilities where the need is. They can't be too far away. Right there is the spot where the coverage need exists, so that's why the tower is up there, to answer your question.
If we say no, what's your plan B?
There isn't one.
There is no plan B?
It's called Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
I'm asking.
There isn't one. Based on Mr. Keller's review of the area, this is the only site that's available.
Who's Mr. Keller?
That's Mr. Keller. So he's the site acquisition director for Varsity, so he was the one responsible for going out and locating the site. And so he's done a, and we included the alternatives analysis. It's fairly comprehensive. It's about 35 properties in it, has a number of maps that kind of show surrounding zoning, show there's a lot of conservation area in this area as well. Limits the number of properties, because conservation area is generally not available for development, including things like ball fields.
Is this cell tower going to approve cell service in the town of, in the town of North Andover?
Yes.
Can you show them the difference? That's what it, before, do the white, before?
Yep.
And then this is, that's what it's going to do.
Okay.
So that's the gap in service, service that it is providing.
And the meaning of filling that gap, it goes from, I don't know any of the language here. It goes from a 10%, you know, can you hear me now kind of thing to 100% can you hear me now? Like, what does turning the white to green actually mean? Do you go from zero coverage to coverage or is it improvement in coverage?
Given the, so it's going to be both. So given the size of the area there, there are going to be, there are going to be areas kind of on the fringe where, you see where the green ends. There are going to be some areas where you may be able to make a phone call, you may be able to make a data connection. Sometimes you may get satisfactory data speeds, other times you won't. That's really unreliable coverage. It may be there, it may not be. It may be useful, sometimes it may be fast enough to use for, you know, to access the internet or stream, other times it won't. When you fill it in inside the green, then it will meet Verizon's, this is Verizon's coverage map, Verizon's standard for reliability for, for data sessions. So, you know, reduce latency, it will meet throughput standards, be able to, you know, a typical user be able to stream what they want to stream, whether that's internet radio or TV or Netflix or access Facebook or any of the other, you know, type of data applications they want to access. They'll have high-speed LTE coverage for that, LTE coverage for voice and, for voice as well. Verizon is moving its network to LTE for, they already do what they call voice over LTE. So LTE now is no longer data-only, it carries voice traffic as well. But it also allows for enhancement in that voice traffic, things like, you may have heard, high-definition voice, which is clearer and allows other type of improvements to, or access during phone calls. Having been a Verizon customer at one point, if you were on the phone, you could not access data at the same time. If I was on the phone and somebody says, you know, how do I get there? And I want to say, oh, wait a minute, I'll call it up on my map and then I'll give you some directions. I couldn't do that, I'd have to hang up and then look at it, then re-initiate the call. Things like LTE now allow for customers to be able to do both, to be on the phone, say, hang on a second while I take it away from my ear, call up whatever I need to for data, look at it, put it back to my ear and tell you what I'm looking at. So those are the kinds of improvements that this leads to.
Can you flick the before and after for me again? I mean, obviously that's a dramatic change.
Right.
From one to the other. Can you flick to after again, if you don't mind?
Sure.
It, again, I'm kind of a newbie at this stuff, so bear with my ignorance here. It appears as though southeast of the tower, there are some areas that get an improvement. What, is that, the improvement in those southeastern areas are, like, there's like a, there's a big white gap and then there's an improvement in service?
Right.
What's, I guess, what's going on there? Again, because I'm ignorant of this kind of stuff?
Sure.
It's my assumption from my point of ignorance that somewhere around the tower, you're going to get, you know, there's going to be obvious improvements. But there appears to be some corollary improvements that appear to be farther away from the tower.
Right, so, and that's one of the things we're talking about. We're talking about height and obstructions, maybe like tree canopy. So the facility broadcasts, Verizon Wireless facilities, AT&amp;T facilities are generally called sectorized. So they kind of point in three different, they have antennas that point in three different directions. So they'll generally have like AT&amp;T or Verizon have like three pointing in one direction, three pointing in another and three pointing in a third. Generally approximating a circle, depending on actual coverage objectives and obstructions. It may, the RF engineers do what they call optimizing to tweak that and try and get the best they can out of a site. That facility then generates a coverage footprint really in that 360-degree direction. There are things that will obstruct signal, which is why it's never a perfect circle pattern. It certainly isn't here, I mean, you can see that even from, you know, from the existing, right? So what happens is you have things like tree cover that block and absorb signal, so the propagation is reduced. You have things like terrain obstructions, so if you have a large hill, where, depending where your position, a valley may also block or do what they call shadowing. So it means someone on the, if the tower's on this side and there's a hill, the propagation kind of starts from the tower and goes down. And so if the hill is taller than the tower and adds some trees on top of that, coverage is going to hit the hill and generally is really going to propagate onto the other side. And so it's going to do what they call shadowing or blocking. And so someone on the opposite side of that hill may not, may not have coverage from the facility that they might have if that hill weren't there at all. And so a carrier may need to put another facility on the other side of that hill to help bridge that if you can't, can't go on.
So this is just Verizon coverage? So you have, you'll have four other carriers potentially on that? So that.
Correct.
Gap would increase potentially? That green area could increase to a good portion of that or is that just?
Well, so this is, that's Verizon's.
Just Verizon alone?
Footprint.
Right.
Each carrier's footprint will be slightly different. So this is AT&amp;T's existing coverage. And that's 18, how AT&amp;T's coverage fills in. So you can see it fills in a little bit differently, similar, but a little bit differently. And so T-Mobile can, now, next carrier is also going to be lower on, on the tower. So again, that's going to impact their, potentially impact their propagation as well, whatever frequencies they're. well whatever frequencies they're using as well. And so that footprint for them will look a little bit different. But in general, the area they would be trying to cover would still be Foster Street, Salem Street, Boxford Street, you know, the ball fields, the surrounding area.
Did you provide coverage for 100-foot tower, alternative size?
Did not.
Why not? If you request a variance for height, because, you know, the top of the tree is, is 106 feet on the average, instead of having the variance, you could have proposed, if this tower was 100 feet, what the coverage would be.
Course of property goes 50 feet. Right.
But I don't know that-
I can answer that for you.
But it's not, if you didn't show it, you didn't provide it, there's no, there's no gap, there's no, you're not, you can say it, but, do you know-
There's no plan A and plan B.
Right. Verizon's obviously going to be on the top, so you would have the 100 feet, and the bottom, like you said, would be at 50, so.
Right. So, oh, I was just going to say, but you try to make these towers so that all the carriers can use one tower, so that you don't have the proliferation of towers in co-location. Each one needs space. My client typically uses about 10 feet of the tower, so if you're talking about five carriers, you, you need about 50 feet. So the 100-foot tower means the, the last carrier is at 50 feet. So there has to be some extra other than, you know, 100 feet, if that's the mark you want to model. And, you know, we can create models at different heights for you to show you the differences, but the thing to always remember there is that not everybody can go at one height. The, the different carriers have to be at different, in our business, we call it a rad center. It, it takes a, a large chunk of vertical real estate to fit everybody in there.
So, just what we, what we have up is actually a height analysis that Planning Board has asked for. We haven't provided to them yet, but I got it today, so we do have it. What I'll show you is, we did several different heights. One, that gray area, and this is for Verizon, is 57 feet. It leaves a lot of area uncovered, and from my, the feedback from the radio frequency engineers is that is not satisfactory, and Verizon would not construct a facility 57 feet at this location. The blue shows the additional coverage added by going from 57 to 77 feet. And again, it leaves a lot of Foster Street uncovered as you head towards Boxford, doesn't quite reach as well into the neighborhood to the north as well. The yellow shows 97 feet. That is, and Verizon's actually, would actually have the second spot on the tower, not the top, that's, that belongs to AT&amp;T. 97 feet, that yellow, that is, fills in, fairly nicely fills in along Foster Street as well. That is the minimum height for Verizon. But we, the 97, 87 foot mark is going to be about the minimum for, the floor for really any carrier based on, on the analysis. And that's why, if you had Verizon at 97, AT&amp;T at 107, and you're not providing any sort of co-location beyond that for any additional carriers.
What happens with the hurricane?
Generally, so, first off, so facilities are-
This is the only way to talk to people, really, is what happens with a hurricane.
So, exactly, so-
Your best shot.
But kind of wind is-
Facilities are constructed in accordance with the building code. The building code does have requirements in it for structures such as towers. So every, and that factors in county, so every county has a different wind speed that you would need to design for. That does include ice, ice loading as well as wind loading. So Dukes County might be higher than, than here, Dukes County might be 120, and this might be 110 or something. But it will, will meet building code on that. And one of the articles I saw fairly recently, I mean, you know, with Puerto Rico, was anyone who needed to try and make a phone call and communication was going to the highways where the towers were that were still operating. It was a lot of the buildings, unfortunately, that facility had been on, the, the buildings had gotten wiped out and damaged. But there were facilities still up and operating on towers in Puerto Rico, and that's where they were sending people to try and, you know, make calls, and for communication, for emergency purposes.
So now here's my question. Part of our bylaw requires for a fall zone and a safety. Did you do a safety analysis and have an engineer certify it?
The plans do, the, the plans do include a certification on sheet A3.
So that falls, it's fallen on the house, it's fallen on the street, if that tower falls?
No. Well, first of all, let's be clear. Towers are designed not to fall. They are designed to avoid a 100% failure. They are designed through the building code and the design so that they have stress points and they will bend or buckle to help avoid a 100% complete lay-down failure. However, if, given the distances on, for the facility, it's 130, it's more than 135 feet to the nearest property line. So at 100%, it's still within, it's still within the property itself. It is more than 135 feet to the nearest structure, even on the property.
Um, sides are back.
So building number one is the, on A1 is the sheet that has distances. Building number one is the closest at 140 feet.
So the right side is 135 feet, so-
Correct.
It's right exactly, and if it doesn't bounce, if that's on an earthquake, and if, I mean, it's a possibility that this could fall and crack and go down, so if that bounces.
So it's not, so I-
So do you have an engineer's report that says that?
We have a certification that says it will comply with the, with the structural requirements for the building code. That's-
You have a safety engineer's certified letter saying that?
I think we're talking about a structural analysis.
Yes.
That is done on existing facilities. So there, there are design specifications that I'm sure we could get you, and I think that's probably what you're looking for, but a structural analysis is not something that's done on something that doesn't exist yet.
But it's so close to a house, someone's property, a street.
Right, so we, I, I'm sure we can-
I want you to guarantee, I mean, you can't guarantee that that, like, seriously, if that's on earthquake, it's going to crack, it's going to fall, you know, you have your bend or whatever, it's going to, what, I understand that, but can you guarantee that?
I can't guarantee the utility pole on-
That's, that's along the street.
But it's there, you know, so.
Or the house, or the, I mean-
Or the buildings, I mean, mine first-
But they're not going for a variance, and they're not in front of this board.
Well-
We can, we can try and buy some additional, you know, some additional information from a structural engineer about tower design, but, I mean, there's no, there's no 100% way to guarantee what, what you're asking. But what we can say, what we can tell you is, first of all, I've had, this, this issue's not, this is not the first time this kind of variance has been, been needed. Even the municipal consultant will tell you, has, has said, same one the planning board has, has said, this isn't going to fall and bounce and tumble over and go to 300 feet. So-
Did the planning board send this out for review, peer review?
They had, they do have a peer reviewer.
Do they, they have it in place now?
Yes.
To who?
David Maxon. They've had it since the, a couple days after we filed the application.
Did you know that? Okay. Did they get a result back yet?
He has given an opinion letter to the planning board on the issues that were, that he pointed out. This was not a specific topic for him, that he raised in his review. But I've had that, I've, Mr. Maxon has been in this business for years.
What's his, I'm sorry?
David Maxon?
Because if we send it out to him as, as a board, are specific issues as a variance, to have it reviewed by him as a-
He's not a structural engineer.
He's not?
No.
Okay. It's just, you know, you're asking for such a lot of variances, and you're asking for something that's very close to the street, which is-
Well, it's 173 feet to the street, to front property.
In a residential area, and, you know, it's just, you're asking for a lot of variance, so I have to guarantee that the town's protected environment.
Typically when this comes up, so, you don't typically, we'll get a structural design once the approval's come. You know, we've got to figure out type of structure, what we're building. Oftentimes it gets, it's a condition of approval that we would have to submit to the building inspector, certified structural letter from an engineer saying that the tower is compliant, and that how it's designed will typically, they, you know, it basically is designed to crumple. And I think that typically satisfies most people, that the tower is going to comply with, you know, all the, all the bylaws and the state regs.
Actually, I think this is the biggest tower in North Andover? That, if my recollection of it is, this is the biggest high, yeah, I think it is.
Is this the biggest tower in North Andover?
It is.
She has a listing in RF and cord, I, I don't know.
I'm pretty sure it is.
I don't go around measuring it.
I thought Johnson Street was tall.
On, there's one out on Chestnut Street, that's actually large too, but I don't think it's 135. I think that's 125.
Does it tie with Chestnut Street?
It is.
What abouts?
On Ray's, near Ray's property, in there.
Is it on the street, is it on land?
No, it's in land, in the back, it wouldn't be able to see.
Is it feeling easy to sit?
Nope.
Ah, it's true, yeah.
I can, I can provide that, all that information for you. I have it, it's on here.
Okay. All right, so, I mean, it's 10:15, so, I mean, so it is getting late. You guys are expensive.
Are there any neighbors here that want to say anything?
That's, you know what, you get the gavel, so I just wanted to give-
Excuse me, excuse me.
Since you guys all came out, an opportunity for someone to speak. And again, we're here for a variance, so the matter that's before us is a variance, and also the planning board does, is a special, they grant the special permit. So the issues of the sound, the radioactive waves are up for the, the planning board to discuss with them. Us is just a strictly a variance.
There's no radioactive waves, just to be clear.
You know what, it just, you know what I'm talking about? The microwaves or whatever.
I don't know, but they're pretty good.
So why don't we give you guys a chance to speak, if you can get, since you came up?
He's with us. May I? It's just you?
Hi, my name's Elaine Kinberry. I live at 160 Foster Street, I'm the butter and a neighbor of Steve Young. I think it's important for this board to know that this group came to person-
Can you speak up a little bit?
Yeah. This group actually called me as well, a number of years ago, to see whether we'd be interested. Our land is quite high, and we said, no, we're not interested. I think it's also important for this board to know that this was the original Foster Farm. It's 1700s building and landscape, cultural landscape intact, and probably, in terms of North Andover's history, the last kind of cultural farming landscape that's actively farmed. Steve and I are, I wouldn't call us partners, but we collaborate. He pastures his livestock on our property. We raise bees, we have huge garden, we have a big flower garden and a vegetable garden, and lots of animals. So I guess I'm confused, because this feels like a commercial enterprise in our residential neighborhood, Canadian-like, and they're asking for eight variances, fairly significant variances of hundreds of feet, 80 times my height for a side yard, and it's definitely going to affect, it's definitely going to affect the landscape. And I feel really strongly that we have to have a little more of a fiduciary kind of responsibility to what's left in terms of open cultural landscape in North Andover. The town owns the land across the street. Steve Young actually mows and pastures our land and the town's land. It's, you know, a habitat for wildfire, lots of, lots of birds and, and what, I don't know what kind of effect, long-term effect cell towers have on, on this kind of habitat, but it certainly visually wouldn't be much of a, of a contributor to what is already a very beautiful intact cultural landscape of many hundreds of years. Not less than two years ago, National Grid came and felt, I guess, that they were insecure because we had many 200, 300-year-old trees in the street, and tore down a number of, of trees on Foster Street, and you can see what's left are the stumps and some very sad residents as well. I just feel that there has to be other locations in town if we need another cell tower. Maybe the municipality has extra land up near the Stevens Estate, which isn't too far, and hilly. I don't understand why somebody's residential backyard could become a location for a cell tower in a residential district. And again, since both these properties are in a 61A, they are a agricultural, active agricultural landscape. I really feel the, the kind of variance that's, what's the height variance here is, is enormous. You will see this thing that, that proposes to look like a pine tree, that's a cell tower, and it certainly won't contribute to the overall integrity of this very important thing that belongs to the community. And since I've lived on this street for 35 years, I can tell you, it's, it's a active byway for bikers. Lots of families come and, and take the conservation trails that now wind their way across the Foster Farm. And I think it's really important that this board see the long-term fiduciary kind of responsibility we all have to preserving what's left in, in terms of North Andover's cultural landscape. And we have, it's intact and it's important, and I don't know, it's just, it seems fairly intrusive that a residential neighborhood that might be a little bit hilly ought to be asked to provide the number of variances this for-profit project is, is seeking to, to access from the town. So as a neighbor, I have to tell you, I'm not happy about what I see happening in my backyard, because I am, I am the butter, and cell service is fine. I don't know that it would be enough of a contribution to alter the landscape for maybe a little less activity, but I haven't, I haven't noticed that we have any problems. We've gotten rid of our landline, we use our cell phones all the time.
For the record, there is one Stevens Estate. There's a cell tower up in Stevens Estate, just to let you know, so.
And, and while, while you make any number of points, as Madam Chair said, the, the use of the property, you know, sticking a cell tower in a residential area is, is the purview of the planning board and, and not us. We are really, this, you know, setbacks kind of a board rather than a use on this matter.
If I could just, just quickly, again, if you look at, you have the vast majority of the area, if you follow the point, I forget, you have that there. So all of this area here is all zoned residential one way or another. So to provide coverage to this significant gap, it will need to be located in a residential zoning district regardless. The other, the other thing, the point about being a location for bikers and walkers, actually the opposite point was made at the planning board hearing by the only person who was, who was there to speak at the time for our first planning board hearing, which was, he's an avid biker, and the coverage on those trails and outdoors is almost non-existent according to, to him, and certainly based on, you know, our radio frequency propagation maps, it is not reliable. And he had the exact opposite experience, that outdoors, when he's biking, there is no coverage, and in the event of an emergency on a, on a trail that's not perhaps well-traveled, wireless communications would be the only way to call for help. In a lot of places that, that he bikes and walks, there is no coverage. So the facility will provide, you know, that benefit as well. It provides certainly, if for personal convenience, but it, it certainly does provide for assistance in emergency communications, for folks to reach loved ones in an emergency, certainly reach first responders in an emergency. If someone goes missing, one of the things they can do is try and ping a cellphone and try and get a location using the enhanced 911 location services all carriers are required to comply with. And so it does have that added safety benefit as well.
Okay, did anyone else on the board have any questions? I mean, we're gonna have to continue it, I mean, we just haven't reached on any of the variances, like specifically in detail. Did you actually look at the Foster land? Did you show that on there, why it wouldn't be feasible to put it on the town property on, not, instead of someone's backyard, as opposed to, you know, right there?
Like the town property?
Yes.
Town property, most of the town property, not all of it, in the, in the area that is the larger parcels, are conservation parcels. That was included in the alternatives analysis, you can see that in the map. Certainly something like the ball field, based on a new SJC ruling I just saw a post on today. If it's not specifically designated already as an Article 97 property, it probably is now.
What, what do you- What, what is in?
So Article 97 is conservation restricted.
Okay.
And so that has to go up, that's the one that requires the two-thirds vote of, I think it's town, I don't remember it exactly, it's two-thirds vote, vote of both legislatures. I believe it's a two-thirds vote of Board of Selectmen, and it may even be a two-thirds vote of town meeting, but that's the part I don't remember. But it is extraordinarily difficult and long process to, to go through and, and get just to simply try and make something available.
Okay.
Which tab is the alternatives?
I'm sorry, five.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And so five includes a statement from Mr. Keller, talking about kind of the process generally, talking about the properties specifically that he, that he looked at, includes a spreadsheet with reasons for inclusion, and includes a number of maps for both kind of just generally demonstrating the locations of the various properties, as well as some other maps like conservation land and other flood zones and other types of restrictions, and help kind of narrow the process down. There aren't that many fairly large parcels, most of the parcels would probably require, would actually require even more relief than what we're, we're seeking here, if they were even available.
So the other high property is owned by National Grid?
It's not high, it's, it was a, it, it, that just has, it had the exist, it has those, the existing power lines on it, and so we, we've addressed it in terms of, one of the, one of the questions certainly would be, is there an existing structure? You could go on, that answer is no, those power lines are too far to the east and also too low. The ground elevation is lower there than what's being, than proposed as well.
On the top of that hill?
Which direction, north or south?
If I'm going, yeah, if I'm going towards Boxford, the power lines that are up there, that, do you know what I'm talking about?
So those, those particular blocks are landmarks.
Okay.
So the power company can do agreements on owned property, but not easement property, if that makes sense? So if they own the land, for instance, and it was, I would say, and there was enough room off the, off the actual easement area, so they don't want anything to fall on the.
They crumble, they don't fall.
No, but they're, but their power lines, right?
They don't want anything immediately adjacent to the power.
So they want everything at tower height setback from their, from the easement or any other structures they have on their property. So, but we are talking about that, that.
Bless you.
That area, unless, leading up is easement land, not owned land. There's some owned land way in the back.
Yes.
But that's not, you can't, one, you can't get there because they're not able to grant a third-party access over, over easement land, if that makes sense.
Okay. Is that in here, did you look at that, is that part of the?
Well, there's a few, I, I am sure I did, I know, there's a few I looked at over that way, I think I, I'm, I'm pretty sure I did, so.
As I said, I did read a lot of it, but not all of it, so.
I did a spreadsheet, and then there's a corresponding map for each one, so.
All right, I would like to get a copy of the planning board, the peer, peer review that they did, to review that, if, if we can get that, a copy to the zoning board. I know it's different aspect, they look at different things, but sometimes there's aspects in the other crossover. I would like to review these variances one by one in our next meeting. I don't know what anyone else on the board would like to do. It's getting late.
Resign?
I'm sick November 14th, so, yeah.
Are we going to have a site visit between now and then?
And plan a site visit, we can set up some times that we can all go and put our boots on and, and go in and look and see the alternatives, the whole land, the whole, can we look at the whole property? Walk the whole property, okay.
I mean, I just drove by it, looked very witty to me, you know?
It is.
It's a lot more unique than you think, so. So we're going to set up a site plan, I have a walk, a walkthrough.
Is that something that we, we possibly do before the next meeting?
We'd like to, yes, absolutely.
Weekend's probably another for everybody.
It doesn't matter to me, but.
Weekend's the best, well, if you give us some dates, we'll go through emails and we'll all say when we can do it, so a couple of dates, because what might be good for me is not good for, you know, anyone else, so.
Probably better to do the reverse, because to keep, we're a lot more flexible. We, we only have to coordinate probably Steve and the landlord.
I can make myself available.
So if you give us a few dates, I'm sure we can make one of those work.
And Mr. Young has given me, you know, the ability to go there even in his absence, so I'm flexible for a few, so.
Okay.
Maybe a week or whatever time works for you guys, or something, or maybe a few days in advance.
So behind the scenes, we'll have like all these dates, and then she'll get, and then, you'll get in touch with them and then give us all the dates. Also, again, the plan review from planning, when's your next planning meeting?
Next Tuesday. So the 17th.
Would you mind if, if one of us attends?
It's a public meeting.
We should be, of course. It's just, it's, it's insight to a couple boards, so.
Do we have to notice the site visit?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah? Just one?
We can have two, we can have multiple.
No, just one notice is what I was asking.
Unless you do multiple dates, and then we have to notice each week.
A week? In advance, how far, 48 hours?
Forty-eight hours.
Okay.
And now that open law can be posted on.
24/7.
Yes.
Including downstairs.
What's really?
In, in counting the 48 hours, right, yeah.
Did anyone else want?
Right, you can't notice something on Friday for Monday.
For Saturday, for Monday. Did anyone else want any, have any other questions while we're here? I mean, it is getting late, and we're all like turning to pumpkins, so.
Only the chair turns into a pumpkin.
Yeah. Actually, I did submit to the board the letter from Rebecca, the Stormwater.
No, okay.
So I, I had a copy of it and I submitted it to the board for review, which is just something to read and look at. Okay.
So continue to November 14th, correct?
Yes, and in between that, we'll have a, a site plan.
Okay, unless there are any further comments, I'm going to make a motion to continue this matter to the meeting on November 14th. Madam Chair, make a motion to continue.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No? A motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
I'll second that motion.
Save it, yep.
We're on the same page.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.